I don't know how many years, Tom even longer in region 12. They graciously agreed to stay on for a couple more years, a couple of years ago. But they're they're getting ready to have the baton over. Years, Tom, even longer in region 12. They graciously agreed. Okay, so you had some feedback there happening. So we need to appoint another CBL chair and another parliamentarian. Now, while that officially lies within the domain of the international president. You can probably imagine that I wouldn't get your feedback on it because frankly, when they when their replacements come on board, the next president and you guys will be the ones that have to ratify or make that decision. We don't want to appoint someone and then have the next set of officers say four months from now, we want to flip that. So I'll be talking to you guys about that. I'd ask for any feedback on names. I didn't really get that many. But we are leaning toward moving that ahead shortly. And I'll send some other communication about how I see that happening. There was some feedback on board effect. You know, I think we got most of the individuals between HQ and me, we've reached out to pretty much everyone who had a question about board effect. We did some data and for the forty-four people that have board effect licenses, I think forty-three had logged in two weeks ago. So we think that's settled. We believe most of the emails have been settled. By the way, not that many emails actually come out from board effect. We get probably, we probably send out one a week at best, and those are not, I would say, material. Nothing we send on those emails. You can't get from the board effect platform directly. Campfire chats. It was really fun. You know, our next one is in December. We've received a bunch of positive comments. You know, I think just our members appreciate knowing what's going on. I think Lori said we had over two hundred people at the peak of the last one, and we expect to have more. So it was really fun. I encourage any of you who want to watch, you can. There's nothing new. You know, Lori and I have committed, there's nothing new. We're going to tell our members that the board hasn't heard before. It's just bringing people up to date. We had just a ton of questions. It was just really quite good. Okay, the last thing is interest groups. One of the things that I heard from a number of the board members, and I will echo this, is that while we have approved the structure of an interest group, this is the light intra club. We have not solidified how we want those to function, how we want to say yes or no to ones, or can we? And how we want to manage these long terms. So that's going to be something that I'm going to be asking the board to start to start to look at. I think it's one of the things that could be a great benefit to our members. But we need to also make sure that we're not degrading sort of the role of the local clubs. But also responding to the interest of our members. So that's something that we have to spend some time talking about. My gut feel is that we're getting a lot of people interested in interest groups, no pun intended. I've already heard from about people interested in launching five, you know, from fly fishing to you know, boondocking, well, sorry, not boondocking, to electric vehicle towing, to touring club, you know, touring van, stuff like that. So I think it's going to be a lot of interest. Alrighty, that's it for me for my president's report. Lot going on. The next other officers' reports. So I'm going to start with Pear first.
Go ahead. I have nothing to report this time, Eric.
All right, thank you. Pear, Karen, anything to report? Karen, anything to report? I think you're muted.
Sorry. We don't have anything to add since last week when we went through or talked about how we approached the standing committee changes, but we have made plans to start meeting again after this meeting and get those wrapped up.
Thanks, Karen. Millie, I see you have the strategic meeting. You want to go over that? Or offsite?
Absolutely, if that's if that's what you'd like me to do.
You got the baton. Or the mic.
So as we discussed previously, we've got the strategic meeting scheduled for May of twenty-three up in Jackson Center, and the closer it gets, the more excited I am about it. I think this is going to be fun. I think that the rough agenda shows on your book. I don't know if you want me to read the entire agenda or not, if people can read through it on the book or if they have questions. Basically, we'll arrive and get to know our facilitator. I don't know if a facilitator has been chosen yet. This meeting is going to give us a chance to really hash out issues, questions, team build a little bit, and certainly work on just just making us work better as a cohesive group, I think. We get a chance to get to know each other a little bit better while we're doing this. So we'll be discussing everything from the questions as a survey going out. Are the survey questions on the book? I couldn't find them. Did we put those in there?
I don't believe they're in there.
Okay, let me just let me just go over those because that's you can read the agenda at your your wish, but if this isn't in there. So basically, the questions and we'll set up two different sections of questions. One that will go to the general membership, which will be similar to this, but a little bit different. I'll go over the ones that we're looking at sending to region presidents, standing committee chairs, and intra club officers. And for those reasons, because they kind of have their pulse on the the feelings and the community of their individual groups, and I think they can give us some good insight. So the first one would be, if you had four years to improve your region or committee or club, what would you do? That's a big one. How would you create buzz or supercharge your group in order to increase member participation, which is something we're all looking for? What do you feel is the value of your membership dues? Maybe opening a can of worms, but it might be a can of worms that needs to be opened. You guys can take the first bite of that can. What has been the biggest recent challenger obstacle for you as a volunteer with this club? We've all had our obstacles, maybe sharing, we can put some cures in there. How can we do a better job of leveraging the differences between local clubs? For example, one club might have fifty percent member participation in most of their rallies, and another club ten percent or five percent. Talking to each other about what are you doing? Maybe maybe Matt's unit has a great system of reaching out to their people that they could share with Millie's unit that maybe doesn't have so much response, that kind of thing. We can learn from each other. And what else can we leverage? Everybody has ideas. I don't care who you are. You're sitting there looking at me, listening to me, and I know you have ideas. If you haven't shared them, this is the time in that meeting to step up or think about it ahead of time. And say, hey, I think we could do this and make the club better, that sort of thing. What opportunities do you see that the club has not fully capitalized on, whether that's marketing or advertising or reaching out to other clubs, that sort of thing? And then, of course, the the usual, what other feedback do you have to share? I think this strategy meeting, we can take the answers to those questions. And and in getting the answers, we may end up with more questions too, I realize that. But this strategy meeting is a chance for us to really hash over these things and maybe get to know each other a little bit better. One one region might be having great success in an area that another region is struggling. And if we're not here to help each other, what the heck are we here for, you know? Certainly open to more questions or comments or help with this sort of thing going forward. I haven't formulated all of the questions for the membership yet. Lori's been working on a survey, and I'm going to get with her on that, but certainly reach out to me if there's anything I can do to make these better.
Okay, I have a couple hands raised, but also I just want to add, take a look at the thing. Another big part of it, of course, is that, you know, we're we're having it in Airstream Inc.'s corporate headquarters, which is fantastic. When we were back there, we met with Bob and Justin, and they graciously offered us to use of their corporate boardroom, which has a good remote zoom-in capabilities, as you would imagine, for a company like that. And one of the cool things that I had said to Bob was that, and Justin was that, this is an opportunity for us to have some of their senior executives join us for a bit, right? You know, we, just in general, Airstream is a strong partner for us, and we want to make sure that we understand from them. You know, what things that we can potentially do together. Alright, so we have three questions, Ginger, Matt, and then Chris.
Okay, just a quick question. Our first vice presidents are not invited to the strategic meeting?
Correct, correct. One of the challenges, so one of the nice things about having it in Airstream's corporate boardroom is that we're having it together around a boardroom. The boardroom isn't that big. It's what you might imagine for typical boardroom. And so it probably sits, you know, fifteen, twenty people or so. And so we will have the anyone else join remotely.
Oh, so there will be a remote option. That would be great.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Definitely, there will be a remote, a remote zoom. And we may split away for some confidential items, but in general, we will have it open for remote attendance. Again, you know, ideally, everyone would be there, but usually we can't, you know, manage both of those things at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ginger. Matt?
Thank you. This was a question for Millie and then maybe a question for Lori. For Millie, you mentioned a survey. Is that an open-ended survey coming out in advance of the meeting? And the answers will be discussed during this strategic planning session, or is it just a thought provoker? Can you give me a little more description? And then I have a second question.
Yes, the plan is to have the surveys go out before March so that we can collect the answers, the how, what people answered, and take them with us to the strategy meeting as working questions.
So so that poses an additional question, and I'm sorry to monopolize, but in my experience in the corporate world, we generally had more than one person trying to collect sort. And do you have a support team? Do you want a support team?
Yes, absolutely.
Let me talk about, so that we're going to almost certainly have a facilitator. You know, I think, and I've been through countless of these, and to try to ask a pair or Millie or anyone, any of us to run these meetings is really hard. And so part of the role of facilitator often is helping out with the pre-work in terms of coming up with the survey questions, potentially speaking to each board member directly ahead of time to kind of get that rapport going and understand specific things don't come across in a survey. So that is going to happen. We're not going to have Billy do the whole thing. But as we get closer, again, we have a ways to go. We can worry about the actual process, but get your inputs to 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 Millie. And I just want to make sure you guys you knew what the general structure was, so you can start to do your travel planning. And of course, you know, we're funding the travel for this as well. Okay, RJ? Sorry, Matt wasn't done. I apologize.
Yeah, so my third question follows up on your mention of us paying the bills. I was going to ask Lori and or Millie, if we've given thought to having, for those of us who may not be able to bring our Airstream to Jackson Center, thought about having some financial arrangement with a local hotel, so we get a sweetheart deal on rates, so I can save money on our budget.
We haven't yet. I think that's a great idea. On that, and I see her hand going up. Some of us are plotting a group stay together at an Airbnb. When you sometimes have a house locally in the area, you can rent for a lot cheaper than hotel. So if you have people that you actually like, you could stay with them. Double check, make sure you like them first, because it could be a really long weekend otherwise. Lori, do we have a hotel in Sydney, maybe, that's willing to work with us?
Yeah, actually, we we have a corporate account, the club does, that gives us corporate rates, plus Airstream also does for over in Sydney. So as we get to that planning stage, we could probably work together on offering that.
Okay, thanks. And RJ, and again, I want to, I'm going to try to move this on. This is a long way in advance. The idea here was just a report from Millie to give a heads up. RJ?
Yeah, I just, can we, like, is the terror port open to to stay at, or do we need to plan to stay somewhere else?
The terror port is always open, first come, first served. Of course, the service people are going to take precedence. I think there's enough places locally. I mean, if you wanted to bring your Airstream, there's campgrounds not too too far away.
Yeah, we just, we just realized Erica has a conference at the same time, so I'm going to have to figure out what to do with the pets if I don't have the Airstream, so that's why I was asking. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Millie. Anything else from your report?
No, not from me.
All right, continuing on with officer reports, Matt, and then Ty, then Terry.
All right, I thought corporate was doing their their first. I have no officer report. I will defer mine to the first item on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if Ty has joined you, so if he has an officer report. Does it appear so? Terry, do you have an additional officer report?
I I don't have a report, but as we go through the day, there are a number of items on our agenda, and if we're voting on things, I just want to make sure that I know who made the motion and who seconded it. So as you go through this process, remember that I'm writing all this stuff down. So if you can be clear about that, I would appreciate it. But other than that, I don't have a report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So next is corporate manager report, Lori.
Hi there. Welcome to Thursday. So as Eric mentioned, I have an effort to keep everyone up to date on what is transpiring. I have been, I loaded all my corporate reports to the Board Effect Library, and they're listed there. The last one that was uploaded was from the second of this month. But since then, some things have changed, so I just want to give you some verbal updates of what has transpired over the last two weeks. We have nine thousand two hundred and thirty-four memberships. That is a twenty-one year high. We are in full renewal mode here at Jackson Center, and we are at a sixty, sixty-three percent renewal rate for those calendar year members. And we have sixty-six hundred calendar year members currently, which means, when I say calendar year, they expire on one one. And so we've got sixty-three of those folks already renewed so far. With like six weeks to go, seven weeks maybe, I feel like we're at a pretty good pace and making some making some progress. Other highlights here, I think most of you know Deb Saylor retired from the club. November fourth was her last day. Corey Maxwell has been filling in and doing a great job getting caught up with craziness at the club. The Abinity Discount Program was launched November first. We've also had several updates into the officer toolbox. We've been trying to work on this when we have time. So I just wanted to share my screen to make sure everybody knows where they can see that. On our main am I visible? Yeah. On our main website page, if you go to current members and then member you go to member resources, down on this list is the easiest way to get to the officer toolbox. And within this toolbox, over the last couple of months, or year or so, we've been adding different forums and links to get to things, but we're also down into this FAQ section. The rally site location, I'll go back to that here in a few minutes, but the main thing is about our insurance. We get a lot of questions. We get a lot of emails of of what kind of insurance, I need insurance for this event or whatnot. So as you can see here, we got a job form together to re to request a certificate of insurance for any event that we're having. Barb is managing all of that, so it'll go directly to her. If there's any special needs, like sometimes the Rose Parade is is a unique one that needs some special insurance, so send extra, extra documents if needed for that. As well as here is a link to an officer, the officer reporting form. That's just not our local clubs, but our regions or interclubs. If there's anything that is changed, it needs to come from the president or vice president, please make sure we're aware as soon as possible to make that stuff updated on the system. And then lastly, one of the last things we've recently updated is the IBT material process. And I would encourage everybody to please look at that, review that, so you can see the four-week deadline, the two-week deadline, and it also gives you a little bit of it's a condensed version out of our procedure manual, but it gives you some idea of what we go through. I'm starting to move that over to Barb. She's handling that, prepping the motions more so than I, so I'm stepping away from that just a little bit. On top of those things, um, let's see here. We're also been working on the new club email procedure, the placement holder emails, as well as content with Corey and Christie and I have been working on trying to find that special niche of how many times we email, what goes out, when, and things of that nature. Do you might have any questions on general club stuff? All right. Moving on. So other things, I made the club, or I'm sorry, I made the boardware a couple of weeks ago. Now, we have launched a couple, couple new initiatives around the rally, and it's just not international rally, but our rallies in general. Number one, we have started a campaign, but basically to try to bring folks to us instead of us go to them in the event market. And this is one of the ads like we are running in one of the events magazines to try to get people to come to us. Basically, we're trying to reposition ourselves within this industry that we are the club that you want at your facility. We are, we know what we're doing, and that's one of the things is we've been working with some of these organizations that they as well have huge, like, questionnaires when somebody calls and wants to rent their facility. Because they don't have the resources or time to handhold people. So that's why we're trying to change that to say, we as a club, whether it's a twenty-rig rally or two thousand-rig rally, we know how to put on rallies, and we know what we need when we roll in. Again, trying to respect their their struggles. They, with a lot of other organizations, are struggling with manpower. So trying to be more of a partner than just a client here and there. As well, we also have launched the, let me go back to the rally site. I think we've shown you guys that we are asking people to bring us information, and as we do, it's going to feed this rally site. And this rally site, and again, not all this data is absolutely correct right now on the stars, but it'll give you an idea of what can happen here. So for example, if you roll over a star, you're going to see the location, the the region, and how many sites they told us they had. And then if you click on that site, it's going to take you directly to their website. Which will help you, again, determine. We also have some literature, if we have literature on a, on a particular facility, we're going to be uploading that and putting that in the link of this spreadsheet. So you can get that by using OneDrive, so we can, we can plot those there. Everybody, this will be updated as soon as we get the information. And then you can also download this spreadsheet directly to your drive to do what you need to do with it. Okay, moving on. So Rock Springs, I am super excited. I tell you what, actually, I questioned our system this morning because yesterday I came in and we had nine hundred nineteen folks registered for Rock Springs. This morning, I came in, we had nine hundred fifty-three. So that was quite the uptick, thirty-four registrations overnight. I'm, I'm going to contribute that to an email that went out, a communication email that went out to all of our members yesterday. But again, as we're trying to reposition ourselves and in this crazy event world, here's one of the posters. I know I shared this with the EC, but here's one of the posters we have sent out to dealers, the folks in Rock Springs has it, they're putting it around. So people know that we're coming, and obviously, we're trying to reach out beyond just our club to find any Airstream owner to get them, try to get them engaged with us and and moved over to the club. So I love that poster, honestly. I think it's fantastic. Thanks to Christie and and our team here on working on that marketing. So we're also in the process right now, recruiting our committee chairs. We have seventy-plus committees, as most of you know, that helps organize the rally. All volunteer-based, and we're working on that. As well as we will be launching soon another tool, an online volunteer signup tool for for to help our committees. So this has come to us because, for example, we use the golf cart committee. That is a ton of time, ton of people. So they've asked us over the last couple of years if there's something that we can do to help them. So now that we've, we found out signup genius is the platform we'll be using. So as we launch this, then those who want to volunteer can go to electronic turn the dates, the times that are available when they want to volunteer, and then so then the chair will be getting emails, spreadsheets, and that, so they can help manage their teams when when they're on the ground. So excited to get that going, those chairs that have been requesting that. Moving on to twenty-four, we basically just have the dates pushed up on the website right now. We haven't done much more than that at this point for twenty-four. But we still have been looking at the twenty-five location. So the team reviewed Syracuse, New York, Harrington, Delaware, York, Pennsylvania, and Perry, Georgia for the twenty twenty-five rally. Larry Owens, our parking guru, I think everybody knows Larry. If you don't know Larry, raise your hand. You'll meet Larry. So Larry has been to the sites to verify parking spaces and and see what was available for us. And for those that are not familiar with how, when we plan and how we plan, that is super important. Larry being on site because not always knowing what the numbers they say they have versus what works and what doesn't work are two different beasts. So Larry's great at it, and and he loves doing that for us. Well, that's what he tells me. So both Syracuse and Harrington have been, have been deemed to be too small for us. It's just would not work for the size that we're estimating for twenty twenty-five. Both York and Perry have enough sites to accommodate us and buildings. So those were the two that were kind of, and then have been in the final running. Initially, the rally team wanted to recommend Perry. And we wanted to recommend Perry for twenty-five because we have not been in the south or southeast since two thousand and seven. They have a great infrastructure for their camping sites, permanent camping sites, multiple large buildings, all air-conditioned for exhibited space, numerous breakout sessions. Actually, I believe they are probably the facility that has the best breakout sessions, amount of breakout sessions. But we've been talking with them, trying to get some dates that they had available for twenty twenty-five. They had early June available, but unfortunately, we lost out to the Limousine Cattle Association for the same timeline, and that's because they were willing, the Limousine Cattle is doing a multi-year contract, so it's kind of hard for us to compete with that. So at this, this point, we're really looking at York. They have over a thousand sites, thirty amps, plenty of buildings to work on. I'm just working with them to figure out some dates. What dates they have available for us to come. Come to them possibly in twenty-five. And just a couple of things, again, as we've been working and trying to establish relationships with with site, site people. The IR is a big bang client, and when I say we're a big bang client, we roll in, we we spend a ton of money for their two weeks, and we're gone. Whereas them and and their business models, they're looking for that repeat that repeat client, right? The Limousine Cattle just committed to five years. So they know for the next five years, they're going to have a two-week client, right? That's bringing as much impact, economic impact to their community and their facility as as we were. And as Eric and I, I'm not joke, but I joked with Eric about, we will lose out to horses and cattle. It's just because they're willing to make those multi-year commitments. So something the group needs to think about as we move forward, as we grow larger and it becomes more and more difficult is either shortening the rally a day or two, something to think about, sharing the grounds with other organizations such as, for example, if example, Perry. Excuse me. You know, if they had a dog show holding, taking up one arena, us saying, oh, sure, well, you know, we'll cohabitate for them for a day or two. But further out and possible commit some multi-year contracts with other facilities. And basically really structure ourselves to be a little more nimble in in to take action quickly when an opportunity arises. Those are some of the definite challenges we are seeing. So that's my two cents.
Any questions for Lori? Great stuff, obviously. Any questions for Lori? I don't see any hands raised, but I'll give a couple of seconds. All right, Matt and then Christine.
Lori, I'm curious if we've given thought to having a smaller group talk about ways to make our rally more nimble, if that's something we ought to do in the next three to six months, is get a group together to talk about that.
Sure. I I think that's part of possibly the, yeah. Yeah, there's nothing wrong with, I've seen more minds of help. We, I will be, actually, Christie and I will be going to, we've been invited to the the convention at the International Association of Fair and Expos, which is in Indianapolis in a couple of weeks. So I'm anxious to get there and talk to some of those event organizers and we're, again, trying We're uh again trying to participate with them. More on a regular basis and they're looking at us for the non-event people, right? We're the non-event, uh, non-fair people. Um, so hopefully we can bring back more.
Well, so uh maybe in the next couple of months, we can talk about that as we try to decide the role of any committees in that.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Matt. Uh, Christina, then John Holly, and then Per.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch, um, I heard York, but I didn't hear the state. I missed that.
Sorry, York, Pennsylvania.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
No problem.
Thanks, Christine. John and then Per.
Hi, it sounds like we're moving forward with a lot of great sights. Um, but we're going back, you're thinking about the far east coast again. We just were in Freiburg. And I know that Rock Springs is in Midwest, really. It's not so much east. Were we considering any on the far west end of the United States? For uh one of these rallies?
Yeah, actually, John, our cadence, so, so Rock Springs is considered west, which is going to be twenty-three. Um, we'll be in Sedalia, kind of the middle of the country, which is twenty-four. And then the east is twenty-five. So after twenty-five, then we're going to go back west. So it's like a cadence. Uh, walking across the country. But again, that's, that's in the perfect world. And one of our biggest challenges is just number of, of folks.
May I make another comment? Uh, not related to this, but uh can you all see me now? Okay, here? Now can you see me?
Yeah.
How about now?
I understand.
Okay, uh, I'm, the comment I'm making is uh if you can all adjust your screen accordingly, so your full face is above your title. And also try and light yourselves like uh Millie, I can't see your face at all because you're um, you're backlit. Now, now you get closer to the computer, I can see your, there you go, okay.
It makes me look younger, John. Don't be pointing out my mission here.
I see. Well, anyway, but uh be sure, for instance, and when you get to the point, for instance, if you can't see me. Then you turn on a light in front of you and reflect it off the wall or whatever. And you can see the face a lot better. Just, just a little bit of uh Zoom etiquette, so we can make sure we're, we know who we're talking to. Thank you. That's all for now.
Thanks, John. Okay, Per and Julie.
Thank you for your report, Lori. I have a question. I'm pretty excited about the volunteer signup uh online mechanism. Um, do you think that's something we could develop down the road to be used by regions and others that run rallies as well? Not just for the international rally?
Hmm, possibly. Um, yeah, we can definitely look at that, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Per. Julie?
Good morning. Um, if multi-year contracts. Is an issue. For a location. Is there a consideration? That we dive into having multi-year contracts? If you find a location that has been successful. Maybe the multi-year contract doesn't have to be every year for five years. Maybe it is. Every other year. And make a commitment to that because obviously this organization is going to go on into infinity that we think. It's going to go on into infinity. So maybe. If Rock Springs is a really great location. That because the, the signup has been so successful. Maybe you go back and say, okay, twenty-three is in Rock Springs, maybe twenty-five and twenty-seven. And i- i- if that, like you suggested, a multi-year contract. Is most effective to get it, to get the facility. Maybe we should be looking at that. Thoughts?
Absolutely, Julie. And actually, a lot of the events um facilities like that, right? So for example, um Sweetwater's already pushed, you know, asking us to do a multi-year, come back in three years or, or five years, whatever it is. So absolutely, that is one of the things that. Would help elevate us on the list of event, you know, people want to set their event location. So I definitely think that the team needs to, we need to seriously consider that. And um I'd hope we can figure something out with that.
Okay.
Thanks, Julie. Okay, um, thanks, Lori. Uh, I don't see any other hands raised. I think we'll move to the uh quarterly financial update. So, Mr. Hackney, to you now.
Thank you. Uh, the quarterly results, the, the reported, um, the financials are published. They're on uh available on Board Effect. Uh, I have written a brief summary, which is part of your book, but I'll read it and then I'll stand for questions. Financial results for the first quarter are on forecast. Income is on forecast at a million eighty-five thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars. Excluding the international rally income, club income was five hundred nine thousand ten dollars. This includes member dues, which met our forecast of three hundred and one thousand one hundred dollars. And new memberships are on forecast and ahead of a great year last year. I will caution, we're now in a slow quarter. And if you look at the um. If you look at the, the numbers, the, the end of the report, you'll see some bar graphs that show. What we would expect by quarter, what we've seen by quarter, and this is a very slow period. People are not typically traveling or thinking and travel until the spring. Um, so I'm not concerned at all based on what I see financially. Um, expenses. Um, Roy and her staff are doing a good job. The rest of you are doing a good job. We're on forecast at four hundred and seventy thousand one forty-three. Uh, travel expenses are, as you would expect, significantly less. Uh, than you would forecast on just a straight line basis. We've only spent eight percent. Uh, we will fix that in the spring, I'm sure. And we do continue to look at new memberships. Uh, there is still some concern on my part, certainly, I suspect some of you. That high fuel costs and high interest rates. May at some point cause a downturn, but we have not seen it yet. And that's my report. I stand for questions.
Thanks, Matt. I'll pause a second. Okay, Per.
Uh, it's a quick question, Matt. Uh, what, what do you think we're going to see in terms of the impact of inflation? Uh, which has been reported to be in the, you know, eight percent range um on. Our expenses and our balancing the budget. You know, how much slop do we have in the budget to manage that?
So uh, he, in answer to your question, we have no slop. But I think there are alternate strategies that uh the finance committee, when you guys all approve the formation of a new finance com- committee. Uh, that we can work on. One of those areas I'd like to talk about and talk to John Becker on is charging a fee anytime you register for a caravan. And I think there are others, some pay, pay for play. Um, options as well as looking harder at the true cost of support for the international rally. So again, we're transferring some of our costs to the actual source of the expense. Um, but again, I'll advertise my support for a finance committee. That would be a full-year job, and I think that would could help advise Lori and the board on ideas to raise income short of increases in dues.
Uh, thanks, Per. Thanks, Matt. I don't see any other hands raised. Okay, so um I think we're going to go into the special committee report unless you guys need a break. I don't see a lot of, okay, so we'll take a break after the special committee report, seeing how that goes. Okay. Um, so again, I'm going to introduce Mona Heath. I'm sure most of you know her. Uh, she's done a fantastic job with her team on coming up with some recommendations for. Implementing the leadership and recruitment process. Okay, Mona, over to you.
Hey, everybody. What a great call. Um, lots of good work going on. It's great to see all the faces I know and some of the faces I haven't yet. Spent time with. So thank you for this opportunity. Um, I just want to take a quick minute and talk about this special committee before I launch into. I assume where the, the action item that the team has prepared. Um. This committee has really simple goals. Uh, that have a long-term effect, uh, positive effect, the intent um for our club. And as Lori talked about, long-term planning, I, I think this is relative to rally sites. I think this is. A super critical part. It's the backbone of who we are and who we can be. Uh, so simplicity in this whole process is key. Uh, our methodology uh for the team was to establish an ongoing. Widespread marketing campaign that utilizes multiple platforms to recruit potential officers for the IBT. And uh, the, we want to create a level set playing field. So we're going to seek resume submissions for the executive council. Using a standard format highlighting candidate background and strengths. The sky's the limit. The more candidates, the better. Let's give our members a choice. Let's give them background information, uh, skill sets that they can analyze across multiple candidates. Uh, the leadership recruitment committee, the special committee that Erica pointed, i- is just that. It, it's, it's recruiting. Uh, we won't be interviewing, editing, nor predetermining candidates. But our goal should ultimately, success should be measured. When multiple applicants submit their interest in serving on the council. This in turn will encourage our membership participation and ownership in a true voting process, truly keeping our members first. Our benchmark should be based on, on what our average voting percentage has been. In twenty twenty-two, the baseline was twenty-two point three percent of our members voted uh for the officers that are in place now. So continued growth in the club is another measurable. And, and uh, membership participation, I think, should, is the third. Uh, our committee transition, we have, as you'll see in the, the action item when it's presented. Uh, we have recommendations on how we sustain that recruitment process. And um it has been an honor to work with the team, which has been representative of our general membership. And uh, it's, and to work with you and hopefully present this and move this forward. Okay. Eric, what do you want me to do now? Read the motion, the summary?
Yeah, introduce your motion, your summary.
Okay, all right.
For a second.
Okay, so uh the motion, uh, the title of it is the nomination standing committee tran- for the transition. Uh, the summary would be that this is a motion to modify WBCCI bylaws and policy. To remove nomination standing committee and replace with policy which defines ongoing leadership and recruitment process. And, and I'm going to take a second here because I just read that. Um, we have been working hard and fast and nimble. Over the last several weeks, months on this. Uh, but, but really accelerated over the last couple of weeks. And, and I think this needs to, to the summary will. Needs to be edited to say that we're going to, we, we propose that we remove the nomination standing committee. And replace that not only with a policy, but with. Another standing committee titled Leadership Recruitment Oversight. Uh, and that is defined in the motion, but I, I didn't catch that in the summary, so I'm sorry about that. Uh, okay, so the motion. I move that WBCCI bylaws, Article Three Committees. Section one, paragraph P nominations be deleted in its entirety. That new paragraph R recruitment oversight be inserted and that remaining paragraphs be renumbered. Section three, paragraph C be amended to remove nominations committees and section eight. Uh, section nine be deleted in its entirety and the remaining sections be renumbered and that. WBCCI bylaws, Article Eight, Board of Trustees and Executive Council. Section three be amended to delete nomination standing committee. Revised paragraph one, sections A and B, revised paragraph two. WBCCI policy three point one one, standing committee. Probably three point eleven, standing committees. General duties, paragraph P nominations be deleted in its entirety. That new paragraph R recruitment oversight be inserted and the remaining paragraphs be renumbered. WBCCI poly eight, policy eight point six point one. Executive Council and International Officers, paragraph A, sub-paragraph C. Be deleted in its entirety and that policy eight point six point two candidacy, pro- leadership candidacy. Candidcy process be added. I've not had enough Diet Coke, even though um it's about eleven o'clock here. Um. The, Mona, keep going, Eric. Okay, perfect.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, purpose and impact. The purpose of this change is to update the process. By which members are encouraged to serve on the executive council and interna- international board of trustees. Background. At the July twenty-second or July twenty twenty-two delegates meeting, changes were approved to the structure of the executive council and IBT. Removal of the nomination standing committee and replacement with an ongoing leadership recruitment process. Oversight committee will support the new structure. More importantly, this change will create a path which empowers any club member who feels that they can contribute. To the executive council to submit a universal statement of candidacy, empowering our members to participate in an election process based on the candidate's strengths. Financial impact minimal to be managed through our annual club budgeting process. And I do have a proviso, if approved, the statement of candidacy. The IBT organizational chart, and honestly, I did that because all the other charts I found on the website were really cute and creative, but they were confusing to me. And so hopefully this other one is, is not confusing. Uh, I know it's not to me anymore, uh, but to our members as well. I hope it, it clearly defines it. Uh, so the IBT organizational chart and FAQs shall be immediately posted to the members-only section of the club website. Additionally, all club members shall be notified of the new process via email and on club social media platforms.
Okay, thanks, Mona. This does not require a second because it's come from a committee. Um, it's a bylaws change. All of our bylaws changes require a two-thirds uh affirmative to pass. Um, open up for uh questions first, the officers, then region presidents, then region vice presidents, and then the public. So any questions or discussions from um officers, international officers? Uh, Per Hamquist.
Yeah, how, how do we proceed to make the adjustment to the motion as proposed by Mona? She noticed that there was a. Little change that needs to be made. What would be the protocol for doing that?
You mean on the summary?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh. It feels like a clerical one, but I think we can probably do off it. Laura, uh, Joanne, why don't you weigh in on this one, please?
Uh, she was just making a uh change in the summary itself. She hasn't made a change in the motion. The motion starts with, I move that, and it mentions all the changes to policy and bylaws. That's the only thing we have to be concerned about making any changes to, and it's not necessary. Uh.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Okay, Brad Briggs, Region Four. Uh, sorry, Ginger Slatterly, Region Seven, and Brad Briggs, Region Four. Apologize.
Thank you, um, Eric. Uh, my only question is, um, for Mona is on your proviso. It says that you're going to notify members through um social means and electronically. Is there also going to be something in like the blue beret? Because some people are not online. Not everybody's on the computer.
I'm sure that we could work with Lori and team to do that as well. Okay, just this is a more immediate call for action. And, but yes, I, I've always committed and we've always committed to never leave our members behind that, that are social, on social media, including my Tim, so.
Yeah, my husband too. Thank you.
Thanks, Ginger. Uh, Brad Briggs, Region Four, and then Bart Fuller, Region One.
Uh, Mona, this is great. Thank you to you and your team. Um, I'm hoping. Once we get our feet on, in going on this, maybe we can possibly incorporate helping regions find. Region officers through this process as well.
Uh, hallelujah. I agree with you. And, and we are members, we have a home at North Texas Airstream Community. And quite honestly, there were only three people put forward there too. So I think it extends even broader. So happy to help with that.
Uh, thanks, Brad. Great. Uh, Bart, uh, Fuller, Region One.
Uh, I am thrilled um to see what we're, we're, we're doing with uh this leadership recruitment oversight committee. I, I think it's just wonderful. Thank you, Mona, for all the work that you've done. Um, I'm, one of the things I do have a concern about is the uh statement of candidacy. Um, and it's going to be standardized, which is wonderful. Um, but I, I think there's going to have to be some parameters. Uh, on, on the length of what this could be, because some people can um write on and on and on. I mean, we have about twelve questions, I believe, on that statement. Um, and um if we're going to be putting this into the blue beret. Um, and, and we get uh eighteen, twenty-five, thirty uh applicants. And each per person wants to do two or three or four pages of, of writing, um, which is wonderful. It's going, it, it will be detrimental, I think. for all of us to read through all of these Statement of Candidacies to get the proper person. If there's some way that we can limit it to just like one page, 500 words or 70 words per question, I don't know really where, how we would do it. But I think we need to be limiting in some way. Thank you.
You know, great, great feedback, Bart. And I've already spoken with Lori. Lori, I'd like to ask you to step in there because not only from the word count or letter character count, but also the ease of using this in the blue beret, if you could.
Absolutely. So Bart, yes, we said the same thing. So my first suggestion, and of course, we can play this a little bit on the online form. We can limit the number of characters that people key into those responses. Sorry, I don't know where you went on our screen the other year. So my first thought was 200. It's not word, it's characters that can go into a box. But again, as we as we roll this out, we can play with that. So then that form also can be exported, and then we can put that information as well right into the blue beret.
Okay, thank you. So I see a couple of hands, but typically we finish, let me finish with the region presidents and loop back around if we need to, back to the officers. So Christine Baum, Region Three.
Understatement of candidacy, is there a place that they could also just quickly identify their region?
Actually, the very first, oh, the very first question says, tell us a little bit about yourself. And our expectation, our anticipation is that that's where people would say, I've been in the club excellent period of time, blah, blah, blah. That's a possibility.
Well, the only question I would have is perhaps if they don't do that, so could it be like name, big red number, region number? Just, I heard a lot of concern during my region meetings about an EC forming all from one region. And also by putting in the statement, if they just say their state, there are some people that are not familiar with what states are in what regions or exactly what the geographic location is of a region. So I just thought it might be easier for a member to be able to quickly identify where another member is from.
Yeah, yeah, that's a fairly easy thing to do. But let's see how, what the other input is, but I've just made a note, region number. And honestly, I think I had that on there, but it's gone.
By the way, I'll go to Laverne McKenna, Region 12 next, but we actually have that information on the back end, Christine. For every member corporate knows what region they're in. And so if the board decides to have that information as part of the publish, we actually don't have to ask the applicant, because we actually can fill that on the back. And that's an option that you guys can consider. All right, Region 12.
Yeah, actually, I was hoping that that information wouldn't be required, because in my mind, that actually makes that region vote for just the people in their region. And I'd rather the diversity of looking, just looking at the candidates and their, you know, what they have to say, but not where they're located, because again, I'd rather, you know, it'd be great, Region 12, we, you know, we vote only for Region 12 people. That wouldn't, that would not, that would not be beneficial to the club. And so I'd like to kind of mix that up a little bit. And also, I don't, how do I put this? Members at large would be able to apply for these positions. There sometimes is a, and I'll say the word, it's a prejudice against members at large. I'd rather that not be in there. I'd rather everyone have equal opportunity to be part of this council. So that's my bill.
If I may, Laverne, the at-large membership was a really important statement. I recall we had seating at a recent international for regions, which is really great because people can stand up and cheer for their region. The at-large members had no idea where to sit. And so if you think about what region are you in, and you ask that question here, they could have that same feeling. Where do I sit? Where do I fit? So that was just my impression there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Laverne. And we'll finish with the region president. So Kathy Giesi, Region 10 President.
Thanks, Laverne, for bringing that up. And I also had that exact same conversation with somebody else that if we're going to be collaborative team, we need to stop looking at things like, well, this person represents me or whatever. And so anyway, I'm just piling on with Laverne here.
Thanks, Kathy. So before I loop back around, do we have any other region presidents that have a question or comment? Okay, region vice presidents, and then we'll loop back around. Okay, so we'll loop back around. Per Hamquist, and then Matt Hackney.
Yeah, this is in regards to limiting the input that applicants can enter into the form. Perhaps we should let the limit be on the total, not on the individual responses. That gives each applicant their own trade-offs. As long as it fits on a page, you know, if they want to put five sentences on something and somebody wants to put one sentence on it, that's their choice.
Lori, that's a great idea. Lori, is that a possibility?
I don't know. I'd have to look into that.
Sounds like a JavaScript thing.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Per. Matt?
So one of the things that we have tried to do is to move items away, items of detail away from the IBT and towards involved collaborative and engaged by our leadership committees. One of the reasons I suggested respectfully that we ought to continue to have a standing committee responsible for the process was to allow them to take things like this out of the bylaws, put them down into one of those sections that Lori was talking about earlier, and give it to the control of the standing committee. So I would suggest perhaps that you entertain a friendly amendment or amend it to remove this specific thing that your committee could spend a lot of time and deliberate on after each round of nominations or recruitment and improve it continuously, rather than coming to the IBT where we have discussions on how many characters and which questions should be there. And that's my thought.
Thank you. I think it's going to be an evolution and I think a learning-based evolution. So thank you, Matt.
Okay, I have a procedural question that, Mona, I'd like you to try to answer first, and if not, we can rely on Joanne. And so I apologize. So as I look at this, the articles that we're looking for voting today, are we voting? I don't think we're voting on the actual language of the Statement of Candidacy.
No.
Right. So we're actually not voting on that today. We're voting on the establishment of SOC, not what's in it. And so that gives us the ability to have changes to it without going through that discussion today. Right? As I understand it, Joanne, can you just weigh in on that, please? Just to make sure.
Wait, if I can, real quick, though, the Statement of Candidacy was provided because this was such a dramatic shift from what we have done. And it would, we wanted to provide a consistent template for questions, again, for consistent template for answers and responses, which ultimately give our members the ability to review and make informed decisions. The Statement of Candidacy was a support document to show what that consistency was. It should have the ability to be nimble. It doesn't mean that, I would hope that as we move forward, it's not an ongoing push, given, taken, push and shove, and well, what about this question? What about that? We really want conciseness in this. But the flexibility, I think, is important going forward. And then I'll defer back.
Yeah, Joanne, can I get a formal just thought on that? So we can see if we can take a vote on the policy? And do we need to include the specific wording of SOC or not?
No, you're not going to include the specific wording of the Statement of Candidacy, nor the organizational structure chart that Mona did. The only thing you are voting on are the bylaws and policies that she has listed in the motions, in the motion.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much on that. Any other questions from the region vice presidents? I don't see any hands raised. I don't see any input from the public on the attendees side. Any hands up? Lori, do you see anything or any inclination on?
No hands. No hands.
All right. So I always struggle with the words at this point, but I will say that, go ahead, Joanne. I think we're ready for a vote, basically.
Okay, you're going to have to say the vote is on, and then you need to read all of that section under motion. I move that and all of the parts that we are considering.
Alrighty, the whole thing.
The whole thing.
I tried the yada, yada, yada with Joanne once and it didn't work, right? So, okay, so the most on the table that we'll be considering is the motion that moving WBCCI bylaws Article Three Committees, Section One, Three, and Nine. Is that okay? For?
No, you have to read exactly what it says, please.
Up into our world.
I do, I totally do. Okay, so Section One Paragraph P nominations deleted in its entirety. New paragraph R recruitment oversight be inserted and that the remaining paragraphs be renumbered. Section Three Paragraph C be amended to remove nominations committee and Section Eight. Section Nine be deleted in its entirety and the remaining sections be renumbered and that. WC bylaws Article Three Board of Trustees, Executive Council. Section Three be amended to delete nomination standing committee. Revise Paragraph One Sections A and B. Revise Paragraph Two. And WBCCI Policy 3.1.1, sorry, 3.11. Me too, Mona. Standing General Duties Paragraph P nominations to be deleted in its entirety. That the new paragraph R recruitment oversight be inserted and the remaining paragraphs be renumbered. And WBCCI Policy 8.6.1 Executive Council and National Officers Paragraph A Subparagraph C be deleted in its entirety and that. Policy 8.6.2 Leadership Candidacy Process be added.
You made one mistake.
Yes.
Corrected. The second bylaw, it's WBCCI bylaws Article Eight.
Oh, you're right, Article Eight. I apologize. This is by Roman numerating, a reading again, by the way, my eyesight. All right, so without objection, this motion passes. So this is, by the way, board, this is a chance for, if you don't, if you want to have a roll call vote, you would raise your hand now with an objection. Okay, I see no objections. So the motion passes as is. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Mona, can you just also, to put you aside, just share your team members? I thought they did a phenomenal job. And one of the things that I would love about the special committees that we've used in the past is that we're able to bring in a very interesting group of people that cut across our demographics, the length of service in the club, things like that.
Yeah, thank you. You know, it's Eric, when I approached you in Maine, I said, this is so important, and it was really all about our members. And so our mantra was of the members, by the members, and for the members. And in recruiting, it was a really intentional recruitment. I had a lot of wonderful people, Bard. Geez, I can't even name them all right now. I'm pretty excited. But all of you, Debbie Hammer, all of you who put your name forward. Darlene Caldwell, thank you. There's a ton of experience out there, but what what we're trying to do is bring our members into this process. And so we started at our roots in doing that. So Meg Riley from Wachtong, New Jersey. Tom Silver is Colorado Airstream Club. He was the president of the Colorado Club. And that's probably the highest officer position we had, but again, of by and for the members. Jen Dice, another officer, she's in the North Texas Airstream Club. Jeff Dahl Rimple, Arkansas Razorback Airstream Club. Amelda Hill, at-large member. Corey Barger, Southeastern Camping Unit. All of them were so participative and brought such an incredible perspective, even Amelda. I love the at-large member going, I don't know a thing about this, but here's my thought. And I thought that was great. So if that's representative of our membership there, I hope that everyone out there listening or watching this YouTube member, as a member that has not voted or felt that they were just simply ratifying a slate of candidates, this is your baby now. So help us create a leadership team for now and in the future that keeps this club thriving. Thank you.
Thanks, Mona. Thanks, thank team. So we have a question from Tom, and then we're going to move to break for a bit. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. President. Number one, I'd like to congratulate Mona on finally making this specific. I'd also like to compliment the president on his reading of the motion. Now he knows what I had to go through. What I would like to say is that with this change made by the IBT, I would like to, I'm going to rewrite the section on nominations in the model of CBL document to reflect this sort of an approach for local clubs and interclubs. Where now the language is that there will be a nominating committee, and that nominating committee will select one candidate, and that is the wording of the current model. I will eliminate the word one. And I will do that with an explanation to each of the local clubs in a letter that will go out in regards to this change. I think that it's important that we have multiple candidates, and that question or that issue was raised earlier by one of the members in talking about this, that we have multiple candidates for any position. And I think if we do this sort of recruitment, it might be very, very valuable at all levels. That was my comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Alrighty, oh, Per, go ahead.
A quick feedback item for Tom. How do you think we can include that also at the region level? I think it would be great if we kind of had a consistency throughout the organization.
That's going to require a change in, that's going to require a change in the bylaws, and I'll take a look at that. All right.
All right, thanks, everyone. Okay, so let's do a 15-minute, do some calisthenics, get some coffee, freshen up, as they say, and then Lynn, you will be on next. And Lynn, do you have a presentation you're going to share? And are you able to share it? Or we need help from this side?
I sent my little tiny PowerPoint and a couple of PDFs in, so they should be in your materials.
Perfect.
It's in the block.
Okay. So you can do that.
Yeah, then Joe will be after Lynn. Joe, did you have a comment before we go on break?
Yeah, just a question. Obviously, my committee report was included in the material. I just want to know if you want me to share it, if you're going to share it on the screen. I just want to talk to some of the slides. I'm not going to read it all. Hopefully, everybody has. I just need to prepare. I've been running dual screens, and I probably need to shut down to a single screen to be able to share it. So I just need to know if I need to prepare for that.
Lori, will you be able to share from your side? That might help. Perhaps someone share from your side, both Lynn and Joe, who can see the presentation, and also people watching can see it more easily.
We were not prepared for that. We thought the officers and those could present their own slides.
Okay, we'll figure that out. All right, just take a break, 15 minutes, come back and see y'all then. Thanks.
Yeah, we took all of our hatches on our seventy-two, flipped them upside down and put the piano hinges on the top.
Well.
So they actually.
Mine's going to be repaired to better state.
So, uh, so how many months did you set my project behind?
Well, none.
Since he's not working it.
I, I have no comment on your project, only mine.
Did you see my trailer?
Yes, I did. I did not get a chance to really look at it. It was quite a wild and hairy day. And so I, I saw it twice, but I didn't get up close and personal. But it looks beautifully intact, and it can see that it's ready for some interior work. He did express that several shorter projects are moving out pretty quickly, and then some bigger things are moving in. And by the way, my project is considered a smaller project.
Oh, I know, I know. Was, was ours inside or outside?
Outside.
Of course.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to get started in a second. Lynn, I could share your slide if that's helpful to you, and just say next slide, or do you want to just talk it through, and what's your preference?
Oh, I'd love it if you share them, otherwise you're going to get some funny view here of my. Yeah, that'd be great. You share, and I'll just say next slide. Then you don't have to make talking points.
So, um, I think we're going to, we're going to start again. Let's see, who am I looking for? Terry. Do we have everyone back now? Do we need anyone shift from a region president standpoint, board president standpoint? Roll back?
We have ten, eleven, nine, one, three, um, four, one, two, three. Let's see who's seven, um, two. One, two, three, four. Uh, is our five and six, seven, let's see, six is here. Laverne, yeah, we've got a quorum.
Awesome. Okay, we will reconvene. I'm going to hand it off to Lynn. I'm going to do a screen share, and Lynn, just tell me next slide when you're ready.
Okay, thank you so much, Eric. Oh, this is fun. Now I can't see my own screen. Okay, good morning. My name is Lynn Tausma, and I am currently the president of the VAC, and thanks a lot for inviting me to meet with you all today. And I just want you to know that even despite of the fact that it looks like I'm in a beautiful trailer, I'm actually sitting in my truck in a Starbucks on my way home, and so once I'm finished with this, I am going to duck out. So I beg your forgiveness, but I'll be leaving after this. So here's my report in the state of the VAC. Next slide. The treasurer's report. The VAC is financially solvent. We meet all our expenses without difficulty. I'm not going to read to you. You can see the balance there. The treasurer's report was submitted. There's two PDFs out there. If you need me to bring those up, I can do that for you. We had a couple of bonus years where particularly during COVID, our expenses were nil. And then during the Lebanon International, we did not have to rent a tent. And those were huge offsets, so our current cash balance is higher than it needs to be. We're going to work on spending that down, and I'm sure that that will will drop as it should. That's a little bit more money than we need to have in our till. I don't know what a prudent reserve would be for us, but it certainly wouldn't be this prudent. So we're expecting probably around eight to $10,000 in expenses at international in Wyoming. Next side, slide, please. A growth in membership. We're continuing to recruit new members. You can see the slides there. You can understand, I'm sure that we welcome every WBCCI member as a member of our interclub. You don't need to have a vintage rig, but if you want to vote, you better buy a vintage rig. Year to date, we're in good standing with, at this printing, was four ninety-three book. As of yesterday, we're at five twenty-four. That excludes persons who are late on their memberships, and those lates are catching up, so I'm seeing those roll in. We're probably really going to hit around six hundred by the end of the year, which brings me to the next slide. Back business, we hold regular meetings via Zoom, of course. Annual business meeting and officer elections have always traditionally been held during international. And one of my initiatives will be to get an electronic voting platform together for this year, so more members can vote, including people who are not present. All of our positions are filled. We host some informational talks for members. We're a little bit behind on that this year, but we're getting ready for it. Spoke with Tom Smithson about being prepared for our CBNL review this year, and so I'm just waiting with bated breath. I have a, a help from a past president, and we're ready to go. Next slide is on membership dues collection. The big initiative for us this past year. VAC membership dues is now fully integrated with ACI, and that is a huge blessing for us, so lots of effort on the part of some key individuals, both at headquarters, WBCCI leadership. And we now are integrated into the same platform, and it makes a big difference. The best thing about it, I think, is that I can walk the VAC member right to their status and say, okay, open up, look at yourself. Are you a member? Oops, you're lapsed. Better pay your dues, and they can do that right on their phone. So it's made a huge difference for us being able to catch up live and in person with people, and also the fun. live and in person with people. And also the functionality of my being able to just go to my phone screen and pull up, you know, a member and see if they're a member of VAC, pull up our current membership numbers. It's just so nimble and it really is a game changer. So again, thanks for that. Next slide is the database. We continue to maintain a really cool, slightly old, unsupported database. It's on FileMaker Pro that has reams and reams and years worth of membership, historical information, including uh multiple trailers and trailer years. And it it's a great tool for us to report out to um our region reps. We can report directly to them how many members they have, what the everybody's demographics are with a one-touch button. So we'll keep that little baby up and running um for the foreseeable future. Unless we get to a point with our WBCCI portal where that will do all things for us. Right now, we're not quite there yet. Um, next slide, please. VAC activities. Well, the VAC hosts lots of stuff, lots of rallies, lots of gatherings. There's a link there if you wanna go look and see what's out there. The current VAC leadership believes that inclusion is the key to our continued success. So we welcome everybody to almost all of our VAC events and activities. The only thing that are exclusive to VAC members only is VAC rendezvous and of course the VAC business meeting. So we invite you all to come and have some fun with us. We're planning our rendezvous this year is going to be onsite at the Sweetwater Events Center on Thursday and Friday immediately prior to international. Preparations are underway for that. Preparations are underway for the international. This year, we're gonna have not one, but two dances. So that should be a lot of fun. And uh we're omitting movie night because our movie night attendance has really dropped. So you know, maybe it's time to move on to something else and we certainly get some good attendance with the dances. So we're doing that. Next site slide, please. VAC goals. So we wanna implement an electronic ballot for our annual elections. And let me just talk about that for a minute, having heard what y'all have been talking about. The challenge for us is recruitment, of course, and we have gone into almost every calendar year with uh nobody stepping up until we get to the business meeting and we're face to face with people. And that's where we tend to recruit our third VP who then comes in and you know, makes the progression up through the officer ranks. So the only concern that I have for electronic balloting is heck, what if I don't have a candidate for third VP? So it's great for me to be able to hear everything you discussed and Mona's, you know, the proposal that you've been working on to get candidates. We've tried in the past to recruit electronically and you know, messaging and just it's hard to get people to step up sometimes unless you can grab them by the arm, give them a pat and say, come on with me. It's a lot of fun. Well, that's what we're working on. Um, it has been suggested in the past that we livestream our annual business meeting, which is held at international. Oh geez, I get some eye rollers from that, especially from our um IT folks and our webmaster support folks. So not quite sure if we're gonna be able to do that yet, but it's it's a goal. And then uh our other other things that we're working on is improving parking at international so that we have our our beautiful old trailers up front and our our members who choose to arrive in their twenty-sixteens or their twenty-twenty's, um those are more in the back. So it'll make it easier for open house. It'll make it easier for judging. And it just will showcase the vintage beauties better. Um, that sums it up. I will take questions. I think that's all I have on my slides. What you got for me?
Awesome. Thanks. So so we'll do the same thing. We'll go first from the international officers and region presidents and et cetera. So any questions for for Lynn? Okay, anybody? Does open up for anybody? Questions for Lynn? Comments? Okay, Lori?
Hey Lynn, I just wanted to tell you guys, thank you. You guys are doing a fantastic job. As you guys know how popular you are and um it's been great seeing all the um the collaborative effort with the membership and getting that online for y'all and and making that all work out well. So super excited to hear all that stuff's happening.
Thanks, Lori.
Great. Okay, John, and then Artie.
Great job, Lynn. Say, uh, you said you made a statement that only who VAC VAC members may vote. Um, now I don't have an old airstream. I don't have a vintage airstream, but I'm a full member of VAC, right?
No, we love you, John, but you are an associate member of VAC. In order to be a regular voting member, you must own a trailer that is twenty-five years old or older. So you are full member in the consideration that you can attend everything. You can certainly attend the business meeting, but you don't vote.
I see. Okay. And I got charged the same fee though as everybody else, right?
Because we're exactly as much fun and who wants to pay extra to vote?
Uh, that's true. Well, okay, you've made it very clear. Now, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Artie, that bard.
Thank you, Eric. Um, in the in the past, I've expressed the opinion in region five and we have we have back uh leaders in each of our regions. And I've expressed interest in, I think that all regions, this is just an opinion, I think that all regions should somehow try to sponsor a vintage rally in each region every year. Not necessarily associated with the region rally or have vintage parking at a region rally, but try to schedule event at every region. Uh, and it always seems as though most of the the vintage airstream club activity happens more towards the west. So I I would love to see more region, more more vintage activity locally. And I've and I've spoke with uh with Damon Beals about that. He's our representative in region five. And hopefully he and I will be working closer this the next, you know, year and a half of my term to try to make something like that happen. There's something else and I don't know whether or not it's time to even think about this or whether or not it just convolutes the situation, but should there be special consideration for airstreams that are over fifty years old? I know to be a member, you only need to be twenty-five years old. Both of them, I've got an eighty-six and it just seems like it's not old enough to be a vintage trailer. You know what I mean? But we also have the sixty-eight, which is fifty to fifty-four years old now. So uh when you sort out the the membership list, can we can we do a sort to see who has fifty-year-old and older? You know, it's it's a pride factor, really, is you're gonna belong to a vintage airstream club. Who really does have the oldest? You know, so those are just thoughts of fun things to to think about moving forward for the vintage club.
Thank you very much. We um encourage all of our region reps to try to host their own um vintage rally and Damon is our um region five rep for the VAC as well. Um, so we try to get those things done at the local level and they're kind of spread out throughout the country. If you take a look at the website, you'll see I think a few more activities popping up than had been in the past. Of course, COVID really kinda skids to some things, but we encourage everybody to have a vintage rally and I try to get to as many as I can. Thank you.
Thanks, Artie. Bard and then RJ.
Hi Lynn, I I applaud you for all that you're you're doing with the vintage. Um, yeah, we were there obviously in Freiburg and um one of the things I I really would like to see and you alluded to it is that that whole parking, if we can work with that. Uh, because you know, we we had a fifty-year-old plus a trailer stuck in between a whole bunch of two two thousands and twenties that were in the very back row and uh even in vintage open house, we never really got much exposure. So it it it's really wonderful if we can group them together at the concourse would be a whole lot easier and all. So I applaud you for working with the parking and trying to get that established. Thank you.
Thanks, Bard. We do have actually a little uh parking assistance team. We've worked with Larry. We've got four volunteers. We'll all be onsite early. Um, we love all of our members, but we really do wanna showcase our vintage and if we can do it, and of course it's herding cats, but you know, an ideal world would say that the nineteen thirties are in front, the forties follow, the fifties follow, things like that, you know. That's a nice idea, but I can assure you that we will have the newer trailers toward the rear so that you can find the old ones. Thank you.
Thanks, Artie. Uh, RJ. Or Bard. RJ, you're next.
Uh, just responding to Artie's comment about like, you know, sponsoring vintage rallies or whatever. We tried to do a joint region two vintage airstream club rally last May and it did not go well. Um, it was an absolute disaster in fact. So what I what I've realized is that, you know, if two groups are planning to do some kind of rally, whether it's, you know, vintage club or two regions or whatever. You know, just clearly delineate who's doing what and who's responsible for what and things like that. So I I think the issue with the vintage rally and the region two rally left kind of a bad taste in some of our mouths, so.
RJ, thank you. I'm aware of some extreme personal circumstances that caused that that uh rally to fail and none of us were aware of that in advance. So I was contacted by some members a couple of months later saying, you know, what happened? How did this fall apart? And it took a couple of months of digging to figure out what happened and I hope that never happens again. That particular issue has been addressed. We have since that time had a couple, three, four joint rallies that went really well, including out in Arizona. So we'll keep trying. Thanks for the comment.
Thanks, RJ. Nancy and then Artie again.
I just wanted to say, Lynn, we had a fabulous gathering in Bottlesville. Uh, so many vintage trailers there, uh on top of all of the speakers who came to represent um our um historical part of the club. We had Dale Schwaber. We had um uh Samantha Martin Kane and David Gully was there. And it was a beautiful pairing of uh the vintage and the history uh alongside that uh Price Tower, which was a vintage and uh Frank Lloyd Wright's um only skyscraper. So and we had an impromptu open house. It was delightful. And there were so many gorgeous trailers there. Um, we really could have done a better job of advertising it as vintage. It was it was a beautiful partnership. Appreciate it. All that supported that and and helped us make it successful.
Wow. Thanks, Nancy. And and thanks for uh getting that going. You know, I know your team along with uh Philip worked really hard on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Artie?
Yes, thank you, Eric. Might I suggest at this time, uh I'll extend a hand forward to region four and region six presidents that maybe next year we can get our representatives together, start working on it now to plan some type of a Midwest vintage rally in in four, five or six. There's more, there's with the more people we can get involved in it, the more thought process we could put forward to find a location and see if we can put something together. And I'd like to extend a hand out to four and six and say, let's see if we can work together on this and just shoot it around and get some ideas about it.
Thanks, Artie. Great idea.
I don't see any other hands up. Nancy, yours is still up, but is that a uh? Okay. Well, well, thank you. Thank you, Lynn. Um, thank you for doing this. This is really good. I'm looking forward to seeing you. I'm Lynn is my bird watching buddy slash mentor, more of a mentor. Um, so looking forward to some birding in uh in Wyoming and uh thanks. And we're really excited about the VAC presence um for rally twenty twenty-three too. Pretty cool. So um thanks, Lynn. Go off and enjoy your day and I'm glad no one bothered you in the Starbucks parking lot, I hope so.
Thanks, everybody. See you soon.
All right. Thank you all. Okay, Mr. Piplinski, um, do you want me to share slides for you?
Um, if you would like to do that, I was prepared to do it, but I can do it either way.
Oh, you you do it then. That's that's even better. Thanks.
Okay, that's why I asked. So I'm I'm all ready to go.
Okay, add it to you.
I'm trying to share my screen, which I've never done before. So hopefully this works.
Yay.
And so that mode, is everybody seeing everything now?
Awesome.
All right, I'm not gonna read everything here. Hopefully everybody uh had a chance to look at it ahead of time. And I do wanna thank Eric for allowing me this time on the agenda. I've been the chairman of the historical committee or uh name the historian. I've got the wrong page. Um, for over seven years, hard to believe it's been seven years already. This is really my first time to more than stand up at a microphone and say, does anybody have any questions? So it's great to to let us let you know what's going on with the historical committee. And I'm gonna say um in um comparison to um the recruiting issue, I don't think the historical committee is having that problem currently. We've got the most engaged enthusiastic team that that certainly since I've been here and probably in the history of the club. I'm not gonna read all the names, but you can see that every one of our members has owned a vintage airstream. Almost all of them currently do. Several of us own those special heritage airstreams that did something as caravan. Um, almost all of us own two or more airstreams. So this is, this is a bunch of crazies that really like the history of the club. And uh they're they're willing to work with me to try to advance some more goals. All right. So just just a a quick reminder for those that haven't read the bylaws and policy. I know that's your favorite thing of what we're charged with doing. And this is simplified from the text that's in there. Bullet one, maintain the club history, acquire catalogs, curate the historical items. We've been doing a an okay job with that. We we have some space constraints and and whatnot that are giving some challenges there. And then convert them to electronic format for easy sharing. And that's a place where we really wanna start moving the needle. We really have not done that. There are a variety of reasons for that. I'll go into that more as we go down and and other pages. Share the club history um by writing soliciting articles for club publication. I think we've done a good job there. I do propose that we propose that we expand that to to say in historical presentations at club events in the future, which I've been putting some presentations on and and a few others have put on historical presentations at the international rally and others in recent years. Um, make historical items available at club electronically. Um, again, I'll talk more about that as we go into additional pages. And then the next two bullets are the whole heritage concept, maintaining or recommending heritage numbers, which are numbers that current, under the current definition are numbers that were used on some of the famous caravans in the club and then authenticate airstreams that were used on those caravans for club numbers. And then the last four bullets are are just the kind of the uh day-to-day management of the archives, loan or donate things like to the Heritage Center for display or dispose of things that really we don't need. We we have space challenges. So we have to maintain that like any museum. Um, they all have a deacquisition policy when they, when there are contents of our own physical space. So I also wanted to just remind you, we're one of two committees that has a an ongoing annual budget. Typically a thousand dollars. Most often we've used this for acid-free archival supplies like sheet protectors, file boxes, et cetera. Because when we took over, almost everything was stored in vinyl binders in vinyl sheet protectors and none of that is good for the long-term preservation of paper items. So we've been trying to convert that to it to physically make the things last longer. We did use it to provide a uh to purchase the scanner. I for a number of years, I scanned with my own scanner till it quit. And then we bought a scanner. I will note that the headquarters printer does scanning, but it's really clunky to use for doing bulk scanning. So it really does not meet our needs. And we have had some talk about wanting to get a book scanner when it comes time to do things like digitizing Bloomberg magazines, membership records and caravan or newspapers. We may need to do that and that would probably potentially exceed the thousand dollar budget. But we also have um a way that we may avoid that. One of our committee members, David Gully, happens to own a printer scanner business and has offered to allow us if we could go to his facility to do bulk scanning and get multiple units going in parallel and have a scanner party. So we may, we may save the club some money there by doing that offsite. Um, our budget, we we do not, we're not on the use it or lose it mentality. So some years we may have spent less than a hundred dollars. Some years we may have spent nearly a thousand. Kind of depends on how much work we were doing in the archives that year. This year, we've only spent about seventy-five dollars so far just to maintain a membership or a a subscription, newspapers.com. or a subscription newspapers.com, which has been very helpful on the historical articles I've been submitting. All right. So we had, the club had a great meeting, Zoom meeting, our first one for, for the telemarketer wants. The answer, hang on. Sorry. So we had, we had a great meeting and we decided to take some initiatives and various committee members volunteered to take the lead on various things. And some of this came in reaction to the standing committee restructure proposal that was proposed this summer. We read that, took it to heart. And so a couple of the items here are related to that. So one of them is the acknowledgement that we haven't been doing a good job going out to our members and asking for donations of materials, whether they be electronic or physical. We've got people that are members that have been members since the seventies. And chances are, when they pass on, the kids are going to look at it and go, I don't know what these old photos are, and it's going to go in the trash. So we need to start asking for that stuff and collecting it sooner rather than later. So David and Ken are going to take the lead on processing of paper, physical items that might come in. And we likely will do that offsite because of limited space headquarters. And then Martis and Damon, I want to take the lead on trying to set up some kind of web interface. So people have digital photos, we can upload them. I mean, the last, you know, since the 2000s, very few people take photos that end up on paper anymore. We need to start collecting that electronic stuff that never existed in paper form. Next is, we really need to get storage space. I put server here, but I will admit I was in Jackson Center a week or two ago, talked to Lori. She says, it's not really server space anymore. It's all cloud storage. But we need to get some space dedicated to the Historical Committee so that we can start storing the stuff we obtain. So we can start digitizing stuff that's in paper and storing it somewhere. And like I said, I've got members in my committee that are ready to have that scanner party rally as soon as we got some place to start. We don't want to start digitizing the stuff and storing it on our own memory stick or our own whatever. It needs to go in the club place where the whole committee has access to it and the club headquarters has access to it. And then for those things we deem critical, we can put them out there for the membership to have access to as well.
Joe, if questions come up, do you want to take them now or wait till the end? What's your preference?
I can do whatever, whatever works for you. You told me I had half an hour. I didn't think my talk was going to take an half an hour. And I know we're running long probably. So if you want me to do that, I don't see the questions, but oh, I guess I can see Matt's hand up.
All right, Matt, you go.
Thanks. Quick question. Is your hesitancy on electronic storage space financially based? And if so, what kind of money are we talking about? Let's go with a proposal if it's something we can do inexpensively.
I have no clue on the money side of things. I really hope that Martis and Damon can speak for the committee. They both have IT backgrounds. Damon used to chair the EC committee. He's still on the IT committee. Martis is a new member with an IT background. I really hope they can work with whoever on the IT committee headquarters and figure out what, what that is. I don't understand that part. I don't know what a gigabyte costs. I don't know your, your current cloud storage situation.
If they have a financial thing, let me know. We'll, we'll see what we can do.
I think Lori has the answer on the storage space. Go ahead, Lori.
Yeah, it's not a financial issue, Matt. It's logistical. Well, at this point, it's logistical because of our, we do not have a physical server anymore at HQ. It's been gone for a couple of years. Everything is cloud-based. So if worst-case scenario, which I don't think I need to, but if we may have to issue one more license or rearrange a licensing for that, or so anyway, if it's minimal, it's, or if there's financial, it's going to be minimal.
Thanks, Lori. Okay, back to you, Joe.
Yeah. So with regards to that, Lori, you know, I don't care this, for storage, we can, you know, as long as we have a way that historical committee members can upload stuff into a secure place, and I'd love it so we all have access so we can share amongst the committee when we got joint projects going on, and then obviously figure out a larger access question as time goes on. And then the next part would be to get some space on the WBCCI website. If we're going to start asking for people to donate electronic stuff, we got to be able to give them an interface that here's where you can go upload your pictures or whatever. And then related to that would be web space for sharing, whether it's old copies of Blue Berets, caravaner newspapers, membership directories, whatever we start scanning. I've already got all the aerial photographs scanned. We could put those up on the website where anybody could ask, access them as soon as we've got space and interface to do it. So we need space somehow on the website. That may be, that may be way a page or two that actually, actually accesses the data wherever it's stored. But again, Damon and Martis need to be the guys there. I barely, barely could do any of that stuff. So they, they need to speak and work with your experts on that. All right. Other, other historical committee initiatives. And Lori knows that both the website, the storage space, and the physical space have been challenges with the Historical Committee for a long time. I've been talking with airstream, and I'm going to go into this more detail later about maybe providing physical storage space for club archive materials. And we'll talk about that more in a later slide. I want to develop a backup capability for managing heritage numbers and heritage airstreams. Right now, it pretty much relies on Joe and stuff. Joey has stored on his computer. Once we've got some heritage space on the cloud, then I can put that up there where other members of the historical committee can access it. And, you know, if I'm not available, somebody else can step in and take on some of those questions. We also talked about developing motion just to refine the historical committee duties. Karen was leading on that. And I do have one slide, you know, that talks about it. It looks like it did not make the agenda for this meeting. Nothing is time critical. It's just, and it's, it's nothing is wrong, really. It's just a refinement. We'll talk about that. I got one page at the end. And then the bottom part, write and solicit historical articles and presentations. Really, Lori and I handle that. I got to give Lori big credit for that. She's my proofreader extraordinaire. She floats article ideas to me, so I couldn't do this alone. All right. So of the three, I'm going to kind of highlight a little bit here. Soliciting donations for the archives. Again, this is in support of the standing committee restructure proposal. It says we need to do a better job getting the history from our members. And I'll admit, we have lots of stuff in the archives from the 50s and 60s, less so from the 70s and newer. So it is a valid point. We need to be gathering that stuff. So for physical donations, I think we're going to have to, because of the space constraints and the manpower constraints at headquarters, none of us live in Jackson Center. We're probably going to propose doing that offsite at one of the committee members' houses for the first level processing, you know, writing a thank you letter, some initial categorization, and then we'll move that to the club space when time permits.
Joe, we have a hand up from Artie. Artie, do you want to?
No.
Yes, Joe. At our region five rally in September, and, and my wife is still choking me for it, I acquired nearly four full 27-gallon black and yellow totes of documents, membership books, and blueberry magazines, trailer life magazines as well. And I brought them home because I kind of like handled the historical, the historical stuff for the Kentucky Club. And I'm just making my suggestion, and you tell me if I'm wrong. As soon as I get a nice snowy day, which might be tomorrow, I can go down to my garage and I could start categorizing it. Because I don't know what you need. And the only way for me to find out is to categorize it and send you a list of what I have to see whether or not you need it or not. Does that, is that kind of like the procedure that we would follow to do that?
That would be great. That would be great.
There's like 65 up through the 90s.
Yeah, I mean, that would be great. We have duplicates of some items. I think we're missing certain items. And when it comes time to do things like digitizing Blue Berets, digitizing caravaner newspapers, and digitizing membership records, which I think are the first three things we'd like to tackle because they're, they're kind of low-hanging fruit. They provide a lot of information and they're pretty easy. They're standardized work. Once you figure out your format, you know, what's, what file type and dots, print and all that, you're scanning things and how you're naming your files. But we're going to have to sacrifice, like the membership records, you cannot lay flat on a scanner. So you're, we're going to have to cut spines off and have sacrificial versions. So absolutely getting a list of what you got, and we can decide if some of that's really not critical. We were covered, or if there's other things we would like to have. I think that's a great point. I, and I will admit, Lori and I have been working for years in the archives, trying to, trying to organize what we've got. We don't really have a good written catalog of it yet. It's still not fully organized. I'll admit, we kind of stalled when COVID hit and we haven't got started again. But I've got a good mental picture of a lot of what we have or don't have, so I can work with that.
Okay, very good. Well, as soon, as soon as I get a good, a good snowfall, I'll, I'll take some time to go through all of that.
Fantastic.
Thanks, Artie. And Joe, just mind your time. We got to, so.
So I already talked about the next, the electronic donations. That's especially critical for capturing the last 10 years. There was somebody before I took over as historian that would gather all, you know, all kinds of stuff from the international rallies and bring it to headquarters each year. That really hasn't been happening. And now it's hard to do that because almost everything's digital. So we need to start doing a better job grabbing all the electronic stuff, whether it be photos or rally programs or whatever it is. And as soon as we get some storage space and a web interface, I think we need to get the word out on all viable mediums, blue beret website, social media, asking for members to make donations of this material. Physical storage space, I'm just going to highlight here briefly. Lori knows this is an issue. It's been an issue forever. I apologize. The pictures here that I got of the archives are from 2017. They've been worked on a lot since then, but I didn't have newer photographs. What you would see now is almost everything is in big acid-free cardboard boxes. It's not in the vinyl binders. You see a lot of them there. But these things are full, floor to ceiling, wall to wall. Sometimes to pull something out, you got to pull three other items to get to the item. It is not conducive to doing any kind of work in them. And we've now overgrown that. There's a, for those that have been to headquarters and have seen the conference room, the closets are full. You see here, there is across from that a shelf with some floor cabinets. Underneath that, we've got bins completely full. We're starting to expand onto the stuff on top of the cabinets, which doesn't mention the stuff that's been shipped to me personally that's sitting at my house and anything else that people are going to start submitting. So we're out of space. It also is hard when we want to go down there and work on it because we start pulling these boxes out and laying out piles and sorting. And that little conference room is very small, and the space that used to be outside the conference room is now starting to get taken up by cubicles for the increased employees we got at headquarters. And plus, they're trying to do their work. So sometimes that leaves us evenings and weekends to work. So it's, it's not really conducive to doing much management of this where we're at right now. So airstream is open to providing us our own storage room. I've had some discussions with their historian, archivist slash curator of their Heritage Center, Samantha Martin. She's talked with her management. I got a picture here of what their current archives look like. You could see the nice neat boxes on nice metal racks. Everything's easy to get to. You don't have to pull out box A, B, and C to get to D. The, our general talks are we would retain ownership of our materials. We could limit access to selected club members and airstream personnel, you know, to be determined who that would be. They would have open space for us when we need to work for, for sorting, classifying, doing materials, scanning. Likely, they would have us sign some sort of agreement. That's all, all details TBD. If we, we'll get to that if we decide this is the way we want to go. And currently unknown if they would charge us a fee for using that space. Hopefully, it'd be something nominal like a dollar a year or something, but I don't, that's just my talking. There's been no formal discussion of that. We would be responsible for managing archives. Literally, they'd be providing us the space. So we still got to provide boxes, folders. We got to do with the own organization ourselves. If we need to go look something up, we need to do it. We can't call up airstream and say, hey, can you go in this box and scan some document for me? They don't have the manpower to do that. And so on the bottom here, I just said, Lori and I've talked about this, Lori Plummer, not my Lori. Is there questions you guys need me to ask to get answered? To think that this is something you could support. I'm not looking for approval to do this today. I just want to figure out, I want to make sure I'm asking the right questions and getting the right answers.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, we have a question from Pear, and then anyone else want to get back to Joe on this question about storage archive stuff and et cetera. Pear?
Thank you, Eric. Joe, have you guys started to think about sort of coming up with some finite size or volume of material that needs to be retained? If we don't do that, it would seem like we could progressively grow this to a very large size. And my assumption is that most people would enjoy the historical information online these days. There was a time when it'd be, when it's cool to go back and look at the original paper that it was written on. But in many cases, the digital artifacts are just as effective in conveying history as their paper counterparts. And so I think I can see that a path forward to manage the growing library of physical material is through scanning and coming up with a good process for identifying things that might be disposed of or, or given away at the International Rally or finding secondary custodians for, as opposed to growing the space itself without sort of an end in sight. What do you think, Joe?
I think digitization is the long-term solution. We're talking decades. We're not talking years to get there. If you look at airstream's archives, they've digitized only a small percentage of what they have. And they've got people that are assigned the job of digitizing it. I mean, not full-time job, but Samantha has had helpers at times that have taken, tackled on digitizing stuff. We are all volunteers. None of us live in Jackson Center. And quite frankly, Lori and I have spent years trying to organize what we've got to even make sense of it, to be able to figure out where the priorities would be for scanning. And long-term, yes, we want to get there. I don't think this is anything that's going to happen quick. That's why we're starting to ask for, let's get some space and let's start scanning the stuff that's easy to do. And once that's done, we'll take the next bite.
Thank you.
So Joe, we need to start moving on. Anything else you wanted to cover today or any other feedback?
I had a page on the Historical Committee revised duties, but I see that that did not make the agenda. I was just going to highlight the changes we did, but we can talk about that when that motion comes back. And then I just had a closing page that just kind of reemphasized, what are my needs? Server space, website space, physical working space.
So leave that up there. Let's see if there's any other questions. Bard, I see you, region one.
Yes, Eric, is this something that we can be inclusive when we were talking with airstream in May? But it seems like that would be a good follow-through there.
Yeah. And so what I understand Bard's getting to is that, we'll talk about this later in a different discussion, but we're trying to strengthen our relationship with airstream. You know, fortunately, Joe has a very strong relationship with airstream, as he's already shared a couple of times. But I think this is something, Bard, we might want to bundle together as part of the cross-sharing of benefits. I totally agree. It's a great idea. Yeah. Other questions from the board or VPs or anyone else? I see one attending question out there. Lori, how do we do this from Myrtle?
I can read it for you, Myrtle Bell. She has three large boards, size of old unit boards that used to be used at International rallies of region nine photos. She's asking Joe if he would be interested in those photos. So we can share Myrtle's information with you, Joe, and you, we can connect you too.
Okay. Photos are good, especially if the event and the people in them are identified. If they're just random photos without identification, it becomes much less of value.
Thanks. Okay, I don't see any other questions. Joe, this has been fantastic. I, I just think it's amazing. I think I just have to say, I mean, y'all know this, but you know, things that we do today are not history. And so it doesn't occur to us, I think, to save those because it's not historical to us. But 20 years from now, 50 years from now, if we hadn't saved that, they're lost. So I think you made a really strong point on that, Joe, and I think we should be stepping up or getting things to you. So.
And on that note, I want to say that things like IBT committee minutes and all that, we really need to be saving that digitally. I know that I know that there is boxes, there's file cabinets of of old ones in the club headquarters that aren't even in the archives that Lori's committed that someday will be digitized. We need to save that history because there are times, questions come to me, when did such and such happen? I may need to refer to those, and right now I I can only do that when I go back to headquarters and look the paper copies up.
Thanks, Joe, for joining us. Um, and uh thank you for taking your time. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to shift over next to special orders. We have none. Uh, we have no unfinished business. Uh, Lori, do we see any other? Did we receive any other member comments um in advance of the meeting?
No, we we did not.
Okay, we're going to go into consent items, and I mentioned it before, but Joanne, can you just walk the board through with process we're going to follow uh for consent items, please?
Sure. Now that we're at the consent items on the agenda, the chairman will ask you. Um, he'll say, you'll see the items listed in nine point zero consent items. And you'll see all the ones that are listed from nine point zero to nine point six. Is there any objection to approving all of the items listed in nine point zero consent items? Now, if you don't object and to any of those, you will not raise an objection. If you do, you'll raise your hand and you'll be recognized by the chair. And you will indicate, I object, I would like to discuss items such and such, and you will give the the item number. When you do that, Eric will write that down so that he has a record of that. He will continue to ask that question. Are there any other objections? Until no one has an objection to anything that's left on the list. When that happens, he'll say, there is an objection to items, and he will list the numbers. Is there any objection to approving the remaining items in the consent items? And he'll list the numbers that are left. If there is no, he'll say, hearing no objection, items, and he will read off the items you do not object to are approved. And then the items that he has on his list, he will say items, and he will list those items will be considered later in the meeting. And he has the option of listing those then under new business. And when we get to new business, he will bring up those items that you have objected to. Or he could uh have you discuss those immediately following the approval of the remaining items on the consent agenda. It that will be up to him.
Thanks, Joanne. Uh, Terry, can you note that I I see that uh we have Larry Madden here representing uh Region Six now?
Absolutely. Got it.
Thank you. All righty, so we're going to move into consent topic. So you'll see items listed under nine dot O consent items. Um, included are items nine dot zero, uh, zero, one, zero, two, one, two, three, four, nine dot five, nine dot six. Is there any objection to approving all items listed in nine dot O? Okay, I don't see anything. So hearing no objections, um, all items nine dot oh, nine dot one, nine dot two, nine dot three, nine dot four, nine dot five, nine dot six. Are proved. And it's that easy.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Wow. You had that ad about the easy button. I think it's some store rights, you know? But I just want to thank you guys, and this is all, by the way, predicated on the assumption that you've all had a chance to take a look at this stuff and review it. And um so thank you very much for moving us through that. All right, we're going to move to, actually, I don't think we needed a break because anyone does, let me know. All right, we're going to move to new business. Um, so ten dot one, uh, Matt Hackney.
Thank you. My motion, uh, and this is uh twenty twenty-two dash seven. Provide for increased travel reimbursement rates. Summary, a high price of fuel in some parts of North America would exceed the IRS, excuse me, could exceed the IRS mileage rate currently at sixty-two and a half cents per mile. This motion would add an alternative means of calculating actual cost for reimbursement. This motion would also increase the camping reimbursement rate to reflect current costs. Motion, I move that WBCCI policy sixteen point six point three financial dispersment, Part B, Section One, be revised to increase the allowable rates for mileage by adding the following sentence. If actual costs exceed the IRS mileage allowance using the standard rate, the actual fuel cost, parentheses required, close parentheses, may be added to the depreciation allowance rate specified by the IRS to provide a basis for mileage reimbursement. Further, that WBCCI policy sixteen point six point three financial dispersments, Part B, subsection one, sub items A and B, delete the dollar amount of twenty dollars and insert thirty dollars.
Thanks, thanks, Matt. Um, do we have a second for the motion?
I second.
Second. Okay, I Terry, I'm going to leave. Did you get who the second was on that one?
I thought it was Kathy first. Is that right? Kathy Geese, Region Ten, seconded the motion.
All right, thank you, Matt. Please proceed to your purpose, impact, background, and financial impact.
All right. Uh, the purpose of the travel budget is to ensure officers of the club can conduct business as required under club policy and bylaws without incurring significant personal expense. These changes would allow consideration of actual fuel costs in reimbursement as well as update the overnight parking rate more consistent with current camping costs. This change would not change the requirement that dispersments not exceed the budgeted amount without approval of the IBT. As always, officers on travel are expected to keep costs at the lowest reasonable level. Background, travel costs have increased more quickly than prices in general. The cost of fuel in some parts of the U.S. and Canada is much higher than the continental average. Additionally, the overnight parking rate has has not increased, has not been increased in many years. It should have sent been increased and is not reflective of current prices. Financial impact, this change will not impact budgeted costs. Any increase in any increased costs would require approval by the IBT in the form of a change to an approved budget or approval of future budgets.
All right, thank you, Matt. Okay, questions from the officers and then the board? All right, I don't see any questions from the officers or the board. A question from Region Vice Presidents on this one? All right, so without objection, um, motion to well, my goodness, ten dot one, motion two to two to seven, uh, will move forward. The motion is for I move that uh WBCCI policy sixteen dot six dot three financial dispersment, Part B, Section One, be revised to increase the allowable rates for mileage by adding the following question. If actual costs exceed the IRS mileage allowance using standard rate, the actual fuel cost um receipts required uh may be added to the depreciation uh allowance rate specified by the IRS to provide a basis for um mileage reimbursement. Further, that WBCCI policy sixteen dot six dot three financial dispersment, Part B, subsection one, sub items A and B, delete the dollar amount of twenty dollars and insert thirty dollars. All right, so without objection, uh, this motion moves forward. Do I have any objections to moving this forward? All right, so approved. Thank you, Matt. Okay, next, we go to ten dot two. Uh, Matt, you again, uh, increased uh request for Region Eleven travel budget for club visits within region.
Thank you. Summary. Increase increase the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three travel budget for Region Eleven to provide for visiting local clubs within the region. The amount requested by re to the amount requested by Regional eleven president. Motion, I move that the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget be revised to increase the amount in account six eight zero zero zero, Region Officer Club visits within region, sub account six eight zero one one A dash Region Eleven, be increased from three thousand seven hundred thirty dollars to five thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars as requested by the Region Eleven President. This increases account six eight zero 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 from thirty-five thousand fifty-seven dollars to thirty-six thousand nine hundred four dollars.
Thanks, Matt. And for a second, just raise your hand on Zoom, by the way. That's probably the easiest for Terry. We'll capture the first one. All right, uh, looks like uh Terry, uh, we have Brad Briggs, Region Four, has seconded. He was the first hand up.
Got it.
Uh, Matt, can you proceed with purpose, impact, background, and financial, please?
Certainly. The Region Eleven President has provided an estimate of travel expenses for visiting local clubs within Region Eleven, which exceeds the amount originally budgeted for this sub account. Background, forecast for travel by region officers for visiting local clubs within the region have historically been inaccurate and underspent. In the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two account six eight zero 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 spent only thirty-four percent of budget, underspending by nineteen thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars. A zero-based budgeting process requiring specific forecast from each region president will be implemented in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four to address this historic inaccuracy. Financial impact, this increase of one thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars will increase the forecast net loss for the year from three hundred sixty-three dollars to two thousand two hundred ten dollars.
All right, uh, thank you, Matt. Okay, questions from the uh the board, officers first and the uh the uh presidents? All righty, questions from uh the Region VPs? I don't see any from the attendees. All right, so the motion is uh oh, go ahead, Matt.
Thank you. I just wanted, I I did during the seminar, but I didn't want to point out again, as I did in my financial impact uh and background that while this is an increase in uh a budgeted deficit, I don't expect us to have a deficit in the travel budget for this year with either this or the next proposed motion, so I fully support it. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, the motion is that to uh the move that uh twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three budget be revised to increase the amount in account six eight zero zero zero, Region Officer Club visits within region, sub account six eight zero one one eight dash Region Eleven, be increased from three thousand seven hundred and thirty to five thousand five hundred and seventy-seven as requested by the Region Eleven President. This increase increases account six eight zero 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 from three five zero five seven to three six nine oh four. All right, uh, without objection, uh, this motion passes as is. Do we have any objections? All right, so pass. Thank you, Matt. Okay, one more for you. Um, uh, item ten dot three, increase request by Region Ten travel budget for club visits within region.
Uh, the motion makers, Kathy Geese on this one.
Apologize, um, uh, Region Ten President Kathy Geese.
Yes, thank you. And first off, I really want to um thank Matt Hackney, RJ Marquette, and Brad Briggs, who uh have worked with me on this and on policy in general to try and clarify um what is in fact something we get reimbursed for. So thank you guys very much for that. Um, I'm balancing two screens, so my apologies if I goof on this one. Um, the summary is to increase the twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three WBCCI travel budget for Region Ten to provide for visiting local clubs to the amount documented and requested by Region Ten President. Uh, motion, I move that the twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three budget be revised to increase the amount in account six eight zero zero zero, Region Officer Club visits within region, sub account six eight zero one zero A by one thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars from three thousand three hundred and seventeen to five thousand one hundred and ninety-nine to reflect actual expenditures required to fulfill the Region Executive Committee duties as described in Article Nine, Regions uh, Regions, Section Five. Purpose is.
Kathy, uh, wait, yes, I can. Do you have a second? Uh, do a second by raising your Zoom hand. All right, we have a second by Matt Hackney. All right, thanks, Kathy. Uh, continue on with your purpose, background, and financial impact.
Thanks. Um, the purpose impact is to increase the travel budget for visiting local clubs within WBCCI Region Ten to reflect the actual costs of travel. Background, WBCCI Region Ten has seven active local clubs in our region, which encompasses the larger geographic region and all of the airstream club international WBCCI regions. The region covers five U.S. states, three provinces, and two territories, Alaska, Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Montana, British Columbia, Alberta, Saskatchewan, Yukon Territories, and the Northwest Territories. The Canadian border was closed due to COVID in twenty twenty, and combined with Canada's restriction of travel between provinces, the previous president, the Canadian resident, was prohibited from visiting the majority of clubs in WBCCI Region Ten and subsequently underutilized his budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Travel to visit every local club this fall for installation rallies. Two clubs traditionally combined, so six rallies total, based on current allowances, total four thousand two hundred and twenty-eight point eighty-nine uh versus a budget of three thousand three hundred and seventeen. In addition, budget does not allow for the Pacific Northwest and Canadian higher fuel prices and average camping fees, which resulted in an additional nine hundred and seventy dollars expense for a total out of pocket in twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three of one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars to fulfill the duties as specified in the WBCCI bylaws. Financial impact will increase the forecasted Region President travel budget totaled by one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay, questions from uh Region from international officers and then the board? Uh, I see Matt Hackney.
Uh, this is more a comment to piggyback on a uh statement Kathy made. Uh, I have received Kathy and uh the rest of the board. I have received from RJ Marquette. The information that uh uh Brad and you and RJ were working on, and I'll be happy after this meeting uh before the next IBT to work with you on the proposed rewording to make it much more understandable what is and is not allowable.
And just for clear, just for clarification, that's when you said you'll be working on it, you'll be working on uh the policy going forward, not on this.
That is correct. I'll be providing um uh either working with the three of you or providing a motion um that you guys see, review, and agree with before uh the next IBT.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Any other questions from the board? Or Region Vice Presidents? I don't see anything from the public. All right, so uh the motion is that uh uh move that twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three uh budget be revised to increase the amount in account six eight zero zero zero, Region Officers Club visits within region, sub account six eight zero one zero A by one thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars from three thousand three hundred and seventeen to five thousand one hundred and ninety-nine to reflect actual expenditures required to fulfill the Region Executive Committee duties as described in Article Nine, Regions, Section Five. All right, with objection, this motion passes. Do any objections? All right, so moved and passed. Thank you, uh, Kathy.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to ten dot four, uh, limitations of elected uh officer positions. Tom Smithson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The title is limitation of elected officer's position. The summary is this motion clarifies that in any WBCCI entity, an elected officer is limited to serving in only one elected position at any one time. Motion, I move that WBCCI policy six point six point one, local clubs, Part B, be deleted in its entirety and a new WBCCI Local clubs part B be deleted in its entirety and a new WBCCI policy six point six point one. Uh, local clubs part B be inserted.
Uh, thanks, Tom. Now, I, this coming from CBL committee, uh, does that? Okay, so no, no second is required since it comes from committee. Um, please, uh, thanks, carry on, please.
Purpose and impacts. The purpose of this motion is to ensure the WBCCI entities. Do not have elected officers serving in more than one office at any one time. For example, the president cannot also serve as the treasurer, et cetera. The background, normally a WBCCI entity will elect separate members for each officer position. As called for in their constitution and bylaws. And if there is a vacancy in the same constitution and bylaws, provide a mechanism for election or appointment of a replacement. The possibility for a conflict of interest is significant when a member takes on more than one elected position at the same time. This has occurred in the past, and this motion is designed to deal with the issue. Financial impact, there is no financial impact to WBCCI. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, questions from the uh, the board? All right, questions from uh, vice presidents? No attendees? All right, I'm gonna ask you read the motion, Tom. I'm having a little trouble finding the exact language here on my, on my screen here. I think I read the motion uh, again, as we prepare to vote.
Okay, the motion, I move that WBCCI policy six point six point one. Local clubs part B be deleted in its entirety and a new WBCCI policy six point six point. One local clubs part B being inserted. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Without objection, uh, this motion moves forward. Do I see any objections to this? All right, so Carrie, thank you, Tom. Uh, the next thing is ten dot. Five dues collection revision, Tom Smithson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Title dues collection revision. Summary, this motion clarifies the manner of dues collection. For international local club, inter club and affiliate dues for WBCCI members. It establishes that all dues will be collected electronically or by mail. Through headquarters and removes the responsibility for dues collection from any entity treasurer. Motion. I move that bylaws article. Four, membership and membership privileges, section twelve, part A be deleted in its entirety and a new article for section twelve, part A be inserted. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. No second is required. Uh, please continue with your purpose impact background and financial impact.
Purpose and impact, this motion removes the responsibility for all dues collection in WBCC two. In WBCCI two headquarters with twice monthly distribution by headquarters. To those entities whose dues have been collected. The principal impact of this motion. Is to simplify the responsibilities of a local club treasurer. As well as introduce a common level of efficiency into the process of dues collection. Also, because of the ability of the member to make payment. Of all intra club and affiliate dues in one place, it makes dues payments much simpler. Background. In the past, dues were collected by local clubs and forwarded to headquarters. And the local club treasurer having full responsibility for collection. In recent years, we have moved to members being able to pay online or by mail directly to headquarters. For international dues and fees and local club dues. More recently, headquarters has moved to electronic deposit of all entities. Due to their respect, dues to their respective accounts. This has created a very efficient system for all. The most recent change from headquarters in allowing members to pay. Not only their local club dues, but any intra club and affiliate dues in one. Stop shopping in quotes has further simplified the process. Financial impact, there is no financial impact on WBCCI beyond budgeted financial fees by their bank, by the, their bank. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, questions from the board, comments from the board? All right, Matt Hackney?
So, Tom, as you know, uh, one of the. Concerns in our years in the club has been to leave no member behind. And I have a question in that regard. And it probably is better answered by Lori, but I will pose the question and the chair can recognize whomever has the answer. The question is this, are there any local clubs? That still wish to or are. Collecting the dues themselves because this would. Prevent them or disallow them from that practice.
Thanks, Matt. I'm gonna give it to Tom first, and if you would defer to Lori, feel free.
Uh, to my knowledge, there, the opportunity has been provided to all clubs. There are some who have been. Uh, reticent in establishing a, a bank. Uh, for deposit of dues. Um, and I will turn it over to Lori to respond.
Uh, actually, all of our US bank, US based clubs, inter clubs. Receive dues electronically. Nobody gets a check anymore from HQ. Um, only ones that we, and uh, only ones we send checks to is a couple of our Canadian based banks, but we will be working on. Uh, transferring them. As for local clubs, like a treasurer collecting dues. Um, it's only happens when somebody's at a rally and like they get handed, here's my dues, and then they just send everything to us and we process it. So. I'd say ninety eight percent. Has converted to um. Online. Uh, electronic.
Okay, thanks, Lori. Uh, Pear, Bard, and then Matt, and we have a attendee question also.
Um, are we ready to accept online dues payments in Canadian dollars? I know, for example, our unit in Quebec, they have their. Payments are in Canadian dollars. They offer. A US dollar fee for those who live outside of Canada. Are, so I think my follow on question depends upon your answer. Thank you.
Tom, uh, do you want to address this or Lori?
I'm, I'm gonna allow Lori to address that.
Yeah, as I just mentioned, our Canadians are. In, in my opinion, exempt from that right now. We are getting ready to work through an electronic transfer process between the two of them, between two of us. Um, a couple of our Canadian groups already are using PayPal to move money to us, and that's how we move money to them, which is fantastic, but there's. Uh, I believe, uh, one or two others that are not, so we are going to make that change here in the next couple of months. They're all willing. It's just, we're gonna have to make it happen.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, although sort of yes, because the, the language and the motion says essentially that. The only way that payments shall be made is through headquarters, that you can't really do it locally. It doesn't leave that option. So, how does, how would that logistically work if they can't do it themselves?
Did you do it themselves? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Uh, Tom, why don't you answer this one first and then we'll see if you need back up?
Okay, so part of the purpose behind this motion. Is to. Encourage, if you will. To encourage local clubs or intra clubs to. Basically get on board. We have had. Sometimes we run into significant. Reluctance. To. Join with the rest of the club. And this was in a, this is an attempt, one, to address the issue. And secondly, it's, it's a, an attempt to a. Provide, and Lori is definitely working to provide. A mechanism for any group, Canadian, US, whatever. To take advantage of this electronic uh, dues collection. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Let's get some more questions out there. I see some other hands up, and then we'll look back around and see if we have to do anything on this one. Okay, so Matt, and then we got a couple online, Lori, we have Deb Wood and we have Darlene Caldwell. So Matt first. And then Deb, Darlene, and I think your hand was up next, Lori.
Thank you. So, Tom, I would tell you, having um. Spent a considerable time trying to solve. Banking between. Uh, the US and Canada and potentially other nations where we may have members. Um. I would suggest that the wording in twelve A state. And I'll skip the first part. Uh, second line, I'd say, or chartered body will normally be collected electronically by headquarters. And that would allow for. Uh, the exception when it's appropriate. And uh, I, I would encourage you to make that change just to ensure that we don't uh. Place into requirement something that can't be done.
Thanks, Matt. And Lori, I want to bring in the comments from Deb Wood and Darlene Caldwell. How do we do that?
Um. Yeah, Barb will allow them to talk. Can I say one thing real quick, Eric?
Sure.
Because I, I think I misspoke with Pear. Our Canadian members are already renewing themselves online. Probably eighty five to ninety percent of them doing themselves through our member, membership portal. So it's just, there's a few, um. Of our Canadian clubs that send. Funds to us, and it's, it's very insignificant the dollar amount, but again, we're working through that process.
So, so to, to follow up there, Lori, so as they do renew online through our system. They then have to note their dues in US dollars, uh, or do we actually have? You know, here is the renewal for Quebec unit, twenty Canadian dollars is the fee. How is this stated?
By our bylaws, the HQ only accepts US dollars. Period. So US comes to us, US goes back to them.
Okay, thanks, Lori. Okay, Deb Wood? You're.
I just wanted to ask if um, anybody had talked to somebody in the amateur radio club? Because it's a little bit of a unique intra club in that we have members who are not WBCCI members. And so I, I was wondering how this would impact them and if that had been worked through.
Thanks, Deb. Um, let me get the last question up before we, uh, I asked Tom to respond to that. Um, Darlene, uh, have you promoted her to be able to speak yet? Okay, great, Darlene, go ahead.
Good morning and thanks, Tom. I would suggest that you hold. That motion until Deb has, or till Lori has a chance to work with the Canadian units. Most of our members, as treasurer of Alberta Saskatchewan, most of our members do send. Uh, their full dues into Lori. And then we get the money back and we take it to the bank. Now, our, we have a deal with our bank. Which doesn't charge us fees, but in return for that. It's minimal service to us, and so they will not accept us having Lori directly transfer money to us and. Our US money being changed. So we're at the grace of the. Exchange internationally, whether we make money on our dues or whether we lose money on our dues. And at the moment, we're doing well, but that goes back and forth. So I don't disagree with your thoughts, Tom, but I suggest we hold it until. Lori has a chance to figure out just how to make it work with the international. Members in your club. Um, we do have members who are lifetime members, and they just send me. Their direct dues to the club, uh, to our local club. In Canadian dollars, because why would I ask them to go get US money? Take it to the bank, I have to exchange it again, then we lose it on both sides of the coin. So I don't disagree with your suggestion, Tom, but maybe we hold it or modify it as Matt suggested. To make it work, uh, once we get everyone on board. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Darlene. Okay, Tom, um, your decision, do you, is this something that you want to continue on, or do you want to pull it and perhaps do electronic voting later? What's your, what's your preference on next steps?
No, I, I would, I would like to continue on with it. I didn't understand what Debbie's question was.
I, I can paraphrase, I think, uh, what I heard her say. Amateurator club is. Interesting club because we have members that are not WBCCI, they pay dues in a certain way. Um, they're a bit of a. Uh. They're a bit different in how the inter clubs work. So I think her comment was, do we know what ARC is doing? And how does this in fact amateur, impact amateur radio clubs dues collections?
Well, okay, I would like to point out that if you read the motion itself. It says, uh, and Matt, I have, don't have a problem with putting the normally in there. That would address the, obviously, the Canadian issue. But if you go on from that, will be collected electronically by headquarters on the WBCCI website. And then there's the or by mail. Uh, so, uh, mail to headquarters. Uh, local club, inter club, affiliate dues are collected by headquarters will be forwarded to, et cetera. Um. There isn't, there is an option there. Uh, to use the, to use mail for collection of the dues. Um, and that was deliberate, because obviously there are some people can't take advantage of the electronic. Method. Now, I would be more than happy to take the friendly amendment and put normally in there if that would be. Okay, Matt agrees. So, that would, we will accept the friendly amendment to say will normally be collected. And I don't know whether this addresses the other issue or not. I, uh, to me.
I think we're.
Lori is doing her best to come up with a solution, particularly for the Canadian thing, and so. You know, we'll just have to go from there.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna take it to a vote just to see where the board is on this one, and um, well, if it doesn't pass, we'll have to consider coming back again. Matt, was there one final comment? Go ahead.
So if I understand the question, that will be with his modification to insert. The word.
Yes, yes, amended, yes. All righty, um, so the motion in front of us, um, this, Terry, please capture this. This is uh, gonna be amended notion. This motion clarifies the, sorry, wrong. Yeah. I'm gonna read it, and then we'll do the clarification part. I move the bylaws article for membership and membership privileges, section twelve, part A be deleted entirely and a new article for section twelve, part A be inserted. The difference is that, um, the amendment is Tom will be adding the comment normally. So that's the motion in front of us. Um, without objection, this motion passes. Uh, do we need discussion on this or um, vote by a roll call? Uh, sorry, thanks, John. Go ahead.
Would you please just read the sentence in section twelve with the word normally inserted, or ask Tom to read it?
Sure, go ahead, Tom. The section twelve A.
All right, membership dues, uh, section twelve, membership dues, part A, international membership dues and fees for members at large. Or regular members. And dues in any local club or chartered body will normally be collected electronically by headquarters on the WBCCI website. Or by mail to headquarters, period. Local club, inter club and affiliate club dues collected by headquarters will be forwarded electronically to the respective entities twice a month.
Thanks, Tom. All right, so with that, with that, without objection, this motion moves forward. Um, do I have any objections? All right, thank you, Tom. Passed. Uh, we're moving to ten dot six now, region officer installation.
Motion ten point six, region officers, title is region officers installation. Summary. This motion clarifies the date of installation of new region officers to coincide with the installation of the international officers. August one, the start of the WBCCI fiscal year. And removes the installation from the international rally. Motion, I move that bylaws article nine, regions. Section two, part F be deleted in its entirety and a new article nine, sex, regions. Section two, part F be inserted. Thank you.
No second is required coming out of committee. Um, purpose, impact, background and financial, please.
Purpose and impact, this motion clarifies the installation date of newly elected region officers and ties it to the installation of international officers on August first. Uh, the start of the WBCCI fiscal year and the first international board of trustees meeting of the fiscal year. Background, in past, region officers took office during the annual international rally. But with the movement of the international board. But with the movement of the international board of trustees meetings to quarterly meetings and not occurring at the international rally, this motion synchronizes the installation to the IBT schedule. Financial impact, there is no financial impact to WBCCI.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, questions from the officers and then region presidents. So we have Matt and then Terry.
Tom, my question is, as a past region president, we have region policies, and I know that we have we have policies regarding timing for the nomination process and the approval process. And is there any change to a policy that needs to accompany this? Or is it strictly up to the regions to correct any region policies? Thank you.
In response to that, Matt, there are no changes in policy associated with this. It's simply that in the past, the region officers have been installed at the international rally.
So if I may, I will volunteer Christine Baum as your constitution bylaws chair to help you with changes to the region three policies. And would want to inform other regions, if you have similar policies, you may need to make changes.
Yeah, it's my intention as, at the recommendation of Karen and Pairs and Matt's committee, you weren't there, Matt, but that's okay. Chasing around in Alaska, that I will be sending out a note to all of the region presidents about any changes that are or have been generated by this IBT meeting that may impact their own policies, right?
Thanks, Tom. Okay, I think we have some, definitely some more questions, Terry, and then Larry.
So I think this is fine. I do wonder, I mean, we've always had sort of a welcoming ceremony at international for people coming in as region officers. Do you think? Well, maybe we don't need that anymore. I think it was kind of nice, but I mean, it's a double edged sword. They don't have to come. They don't have to spend the money to come. But there's also no sort of welcoming event if they do come. So I'm just kind of wondering about that. What are people's thoughts about that?
Well, let me, let me address that because that was, that was something that obviously went through my mind when, in trying to set this up. What we're trying to do is to synchronize the installation of region officers with the installation, the executive council, council members, and the new elected officers of WBCCI. Policy is what has been at the international rally, is what has dictated the installation ceremonies and recognition and all of that. I have no idea what the international rally committee would propose in that regard. I would assume that there would still be at the international rally as a part of the normal festivities, you know, some recognition of departing region officers and incoming region officers. But that's not something that's in WBCCI's policies or bylaws. That's something that occurs or has occurred associated with the policies of the international rally.
Thanks, Tom. Larry, region six?
Yeah, I just want to comment on the the installation of a new region officer at WBCCI at the international rally. You know, in my case, and in my first vice president Jan's case, she's been after it for a number of years, and I've after it now five and a half years. And it was just kind of a special moment to be recognized with the other officers coming in. I think doing it with the ceremonies kind of taken a little bit of the reward out of the effort these officers put into their regions. I support some type of ceremony. It's just my way of thinking it's a recognition for the hard work they've done. And it is a monetary sacrifice. And if you don't think so, you haven't been traveling around in your region very much. And it's also a very, very time consuming thing. It takes a lot of your time and effort. While we all want to do it, we love to do it, it's still something that deserves a certain bit of resignation, excuse me, recognition in my point of view. Thank you.
Larry, let me, let me address this just very briefly, and that's the fact that the twenty-four international rally is going to be in October. The first IBT meeting is going to be in August. And as a consequence, you need to have region officers installed to sit on the IBT. This was part of the problem. I mean, we're, we are trying to address the temperature issue associated with international rallies, which, by the way, is getting much more serious, as was evidenced in Freiberg this year. And, and at the same time, deal with the governance side of it. I would propose that I would propose that at the international rally, wherever it's held and whenever it's held, that there be recognition of both new and retiring international or regional officers. But that's not part of
So you guys, we need to just be clear, what we're discussing now is the installation, not the ceremony. They're two separate things. So we're not discussing now.
I realize that.
I just want to clarify first for Tom, because the comments
I do understand that, but please listen to what they're saying. This is a recognition issue, and I, you know, I don't know how you address that. That's not, that's not in my
I want to focus this discussion, though, on this motion, which is about installation date, not the ceremony, which are two separate things. Matt, did you have a question on the installation date versus the ceremony?
Simply a comment is part of the discussion we're going to have on international rally committee. And nimbleness, as I spoke earlier, I think this still has a place and its recognition is important, as is thank you, gratitude. So I would encourage people to divorce this question entirely from this motion.
Okay, another couple of things. Larry, you had your hand up and it went down again, but I'm going to give you next, and then Terry next.
I just want to, the ceremony of recognition, I agree with Eric, is not part of this motion. And that's not going away from the IR. It's probably not going to be the same look in the past because of dates, but there will still, something will be happening to recognize our volunteers who hold office. So that will definitely still happen.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, this was, okay, Terry, and then Laverne's hand went down, but Terry?
I think we're clearly talking apples and oranges here. So this is the formality. The ceremony, I think we would all agree, is important and valuable, and I'm sure will be done. So thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Laverne, region twelve?
So, region twelve has our, our normal region rally is in October. But our vice presidents are installed at our rally. They were still vice presidents when they were voted in, and the date started on August first or will start on August first. The ceremony will be in October, according to what we normally do, but they are still officers as of August first. And, and it's two separate things, right? So, yeah, we're talking about aligning the dates versus a installation ceremony and the date. Right?
Okay, thanks, Laverne. Any other questions from the board or region VPs? All right, so I go back to the motion again. Oh, I see nothing from the attendees either, by the way. The motion is that I move the region bylaws article nine, sections two, part F, be deleted in its entirety. The new article nine, region, section two, part F, be inserted. And I think we all understand what we're going to vote on, right? You all are going to vote on, it's not about the ceremony that's independent. This is about the date, the official date of installation. All right, so do I hear any objections? That's the motion. Any objections to ten dot five? Okay, so without objections, this will move forward. Any objections? All right, this moves forward. Thank you, Tom, for your work on this one. All right, next, Kate Coast, national event badges and airstream numbers. Ten dot seven.
Thank you for having me today. I'd like to introduce a motion to amend the blue book policies to reflect changes to name badges and airstream numbers. I move that WBCCI policy sixteen point six point eight badge standard items, item D, badge color coding be amended to reflect a new item ten be inserted. Further WBCCI policy sixteen point six point ten airstream numbers, item A, airstream number range definitions, item seven, nine hundred series be deleted and a new item seven be inserted.
Thanks, Kate. This is from a committee, does not require second. So can you please read purpose, impact, background, and financial impact?
Great. Purpose and impact, a color coded badge and airstream big red numbers range for national event rallies will provide recognition to volunteer hosts and spouse and partners meeting requirements identified in the WBCCI policies. In the background, national event rallies is a WBCCI program that is updating many of its program elements to meet its stated goals of increased member benefits, improved status equal to that of national caravans, and grow partnership opportunities. The national event rallies program has not had a color coded badge or a dedicated series of big red numbers. These additions to the program would be equal to that of the national caravan program, and there are no financial impacts.
Thanks, Kate. Okay, discussions from the board, officers and then the board? Or questions? All right, Matt?
So Kate, if you have hosted national event rallies numerous times, and you retire from it, hand it off, will the badge follow you?
The, as I understand it, the badge would be worn when you were a host of that rally during that period, and that you would wear your normal club badge or a president's badge when you were representing that position. But in my investigation of this, you know, there are numerous people, I was going to say Jay Thompson is an example, who has, you know, five different badges. And he wears those, or you know, other people like yourself, you would wear that when you were in that role.
So, so I would encourage you to think about, I'm not thinking you should change this motion, but you should have some future change to reflect after you've hosted more than X as they do with caravans. They can wear the past badge for perpetuity. Because I think it's a very important thing to encourage national event rallies, and I would love to see more recognition of our past national event rally hosts.
That's a great suggestion. I just was following the corollary with what national caravans do, but agreed, they, they would have a similar thing that would be addressed in our handbook, which is five rallies, excuse me, you would get your badge, you know, when you are a host, and but then beyond that, we haven't really looked into, to how long you would keep it or wear it into the future.
Thanks, Matt. That's Kate. Lori?
Yeah, just to give some clarification on current badges for different groups such as caravan leaders, when we issue those, there's no, as Kate mentioned, they wear that depending upon when what role they're playing. Caravan leaders have caravan badges. We don't take them away from them, and they wear them when they went. So it's more of a self policing type deal with different colored badges. So I don't, I don't see that we need to, again, be doing some, you know, micromanaging of what badge people wear when.
Thanks, Lori. Nancy?
I guess I'm thinking at a national event rally, who would wear, who would get the badge? There could be thirty people. There could be twenty-five. I don't, I'm not understanding. Like a caravan, there's two or four leaders, but in a events rally, just the people who sponsor it?
Yes, ma'am, it would only be for the host of that rally, the designated host, and their spouse and partner, not for, not for the attendees.
Nancy, does it answer your question? You look like you have more to
I'm just, I'm just thinking if, if region nine sponsors an event, then the region nine president is going to wear the badge that just doesn't do, it's not necessary. It's the people that, you know, are working hard to help put it on. And there's sponsors that are paying for things. It just seems very complicated in a, in a national event rally to single out a host, one host, but
It's okay. So just in terms of kind of clarification of definitions, there are sponsors to a rally, and that might be a region may sponsor the rally, but there is the host, and there are designated hosts for all thirteen of the national event rallies that we have, and they are the person that does the on the ground management of that rally. There can be, and I checked in with caravan similarly, there might be assistants as well, but there's always a single point person designated, the caravan leader. And in this case, they are people designated as national event rally hosts, and those would be the person that would be eligible to wear that badge.
Thanks, Nancy. Okay, Ty, and then Matt, and then Christine.
Okay, my question is, is I've done two national event rallies that have run for a few years now. And we have a host and we have a co-host. We split the responsibilities up. So are we just going to give this to the host? Or the co-host also?
The well, what I've, again, trying to follow what national caravans have in place. They do have co-caravan leaders, but there is one assistance, I guess. And as I understand it, they, only the designated host or caravan leader in this case would be the person that would wear that badge. You wouldn't have seven different assistants wearing the badge, just the named host of that.
Okay, because like our pet and paw rally, we host it with New England. So we have, there's a co-host that does the New England group, and then we have, there's the host for the Cape Cod unit. So how do we decide who's going to wear a badge? Or we just don't? I mean, there's, I understand what you're doing with caravan, but this is something different that does it a little bit differently too. So it's like apples and oranges. But we got to check in to make sure that we got this covered correctly, I think.
Right. Again, I just, I think that going back to a designated host and that person would be the one that had the badge. I don't know, maybe there's more discussion around, you know, if there's, if there's two hosts, maybe that, you know, co-hosts should, should be able to do that. I think so.
Yeah, let's see if there's more comments in this. So we've got Matt, Christine, Karen, Pear, and Joe. So there's more comments. Matt?
So Kate, first, I applaud this. I think it's a great idea. I would tell you that our co-leads on North, or co-leads, co-hosts on North to Alaska also wore the national caravan leader badge. I would tell you that the way you've worded it, leaving it up to the chair of the committee to determine who wears the badge is perfectly appropriate. And I would think that as, as you've ordered it, you decide, or the chair who succeeds you, chairs who You decide, or the chair who succeeds you, chairs who succeed you would decide who wears the badge. And I don't think you got a problem. I give you a thumbs up and I'm out of your way.
You know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going back and rereading the information that was provided to me by John Becker. And it is, it, it, he doesn't really address the, he addresses it for the big red numbers. But he doesn't really say, he just talks about when people wear their badges. So it may be very likely that you're correct, that if there's.
I know, I, I know I am. I re, I headed the committee that revised the handbook.
Okay.
So I'm supportive.
May be clear. Okay, great.
Let's get some more.
I guess the answer is the co-hosts would be eligible for the color-coded badges as well.
Okay, let's see what other comments come across, Kate, before we kind of.
Thank you, Eric.
Thing. Okay, Christine and then Pear and then Joe.
Could you just clarify about the big red number? That's the part that I'm a little confused by. Does it, does a host have to do five of them before they get a change to a big red number? It's just not clear to me.
The, the language is the same as the language for national caravans. And again, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm reading John's email to me at the same time. But yes, you would have to host a minimum of five national event rallies to be eligible for a big red number. And the national caravans, again, as I'm reading his email, he, that national caravans. If you're the, you've hosted five of them or you're the caravan leader on five. It can be two different route, two different caravans. It does not have to be contiguous. And that's how they make decisions about the caravan leader. And who gets the, the big red number.
And so it would be in the eight hundred series? Is that correct?
It would be in the nine hundred series.
In the hundred series.
Which is not, is in the policies now is just held, it's not open.
Okay, we'd be in, okay.
It's available.
It's available, yeah.
Okay, Christine, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Pear and then Joe.
Just a comment, I'm supportive of allowing the co-hosts to also carry the badge. It's great marketing and we're trying to pitch national adventure rally, so it's a good conversation starter. That's it.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Pear. Joe?
I also am supportive of co-host getting it. We were on Southwest Adventure Caravan last year, or not last year, a few years ago. And there were two host couples. And on certain day, it was couple A on, on day B, it was, it was couple B. And they were both fully responsible for their part. They should have both been wearing the badge. And I would think if you have two co-hosting couples for a national rally, it would be the same way. They should both be able to wear the badge.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, I don't see any other questions from the board. I don't see any other from attendees. Anything else from Region VPs or the public on this question, this topic? All right, and so we'll bring it back to just to a vote. So the motion in front of you is that from National Events Rallies. Is I move the WBCCI policy sixteen dot six dot eight badge standard items, item D badge color coding. Be amended to reflect a new item ten be inserted. Further WBCCI policy sixteen dot six dot ten airstream numbers, item A. Airstream numbers range definition, item seven, seven, nine hundred series, which is nine hundred to nine ninety-nine. Will be deleted and new item seven be inserted. Without objection, this is approved. Nancy, are you, do you have an objection or a question? I, sorry, I couldn't hear.
You're muted. Object, I object.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so we'll move to roll call. Terry, are you ready to do the roll call?
I am so ready.
And by the way, this requires a majority, so fifty, whatever the number of majorities, a majority of the pass because it's policy. Bylaws are two-thirds, it's this policy. All right, go ahead.
All right, I'm gonna start with Region Six President Larry Madden. Yes or no? Past, or what is it, Eric? Is it in favor or not in favor?
Let's do in favor and out of favor, that's pretty.
Favor, not in favor. EC member Millie O'Donnell.
In favor.
Region Four President Brad Briggs.
In favor.
Region Three President Christine Baum.
In favor.
Region One President Bart Fuller.
In favor.
Region Nine President Nancy Fitzgerald.
Ah, not in favor.
EC member Karen Fisher.
In favor.
Region Eight President Greg Badner.
In favor.
International Secretary, I'm in favor. Region Two President RJ Marquette.
He left.
Okay, thank you. Immediate past President Time Mott.
I'm not in favor.
Region Seven President Ginger Slattery.
In favor.
Region Five President Artie Martin.
In favor.
Region Twelve President Laverne McHenry.
In favor.
Vice President Pear Hamquist.
In favor.
Region Ten President Kathy Giese.
In favor.
Treasurer Matt Hackney.
In favor.
And Region Eleven President Stephen Parr.
In favor.
So, Mr. President, we have one, two, three, four, five. Fifteen, yes, two, no, and one left. The, the motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you guys very much. Okay, the next order of business is Region, Region Business Announcements. But after that, though, remember that there's a closed session for the IBT only. And so just giving you, before people just kind of drift off, if you look in your board effect. Or your calendar, it has the login. It's a different Zoom login, which isn't recorded and is not streamed. So when we finish here, I'm gonna ask, we immediately jump over to that in the interest of time. All right, so before we go to, to Region Report Outs, Matt, did you, you have a question or your hands up?
Uh, yeah, so I'd love if we take a ten-minute bio break between.
Okay, appreciate that. All right, let's go through the Region Presidents. Not because she's my wife, but we'll start at twelve and go, and I can't randomize right now, sorry. So Region Twelve, we'll go, go kind of reverse updates for regions. Region Twelve.
Okay, not that you're picking on me. Okay, so Region Twelve, kind of excited. We are going to a new place for our Region Rally this year, have the contract in hand. We're going to Pismo Beach, which is, again, for Region Rally. It's a, it's a new facility for us. Interesting enough, there is a large vintage rally. That is held there, maybe even twice a year. So, so we're looking for a large vintage presence there. We're, we're really excited about that. Also, the, because of the Sedalia. Rally happening in October, next year. We're going to look at that as an opportunity for Region Twelve. Our, our rallies are normally held in October. So we're looking to, we're looking at taking an opportunity of going somewhere that we would not normally go. And that is, actually, I'm not sure if, if this is in Nevada. But we, we are sort of heading in, in that direction. Unfortunately, on the West Coast, in the last five years, we have this phenomenon called. A fire season, which is, which is pretty sad. But this area of, of Nevada, maybe California Mammoth. Is sort of in a pocket where we have large firestorms. And so October is not a good time to go there. So we're looking forward to, to maybe using the June-July dates to, to go ahead. And, and, and get an opportunity to, you know, be in some, at a different area. So, so yeah, that's our report. We're, we're excited about it. And we're also doing something a little bit different with our rallies. And that we are having representatives from each of our eleven local clubs plan these rallies. Where we, we normally have a local club be the host. But we're, we're going to spread it out so that we can have some consistency and also some input from everyone. So that's my report.
Thanks, Laverne. Okay, Region Eleven?
Yes, and thank you all for attending. And from Region Eleven, I would like to report that now all six of our clubs. Are healthy and back up and running. We now have a new logo and flag. And we got our travel budget approved. And in addition to that, we now have our policies and procedures. So everything's looking good from Region Eleven. We're kind of winding down now for the holidays. The next big event is going to be our holiday luncheons, business meetings for the units and clubs. And then the big one is the Four Corners New Year's Eve Rally at Picacho Peak. Other than that, everything's going fine and thank you all.
That's great news. Thanks, Stephen. All right, Region Ten.
Greetings. We have a monthly Zoom with all of our local club presidents, which I postpone a week. And it's going to be this evening, so I can share what I can share with them about the meeting today. And I'll know more about what's going on there, but we are also kind of wrapping things up for the year. West of the mountains, we do tend to continue to rally on. I personally hosted a big rally last week called Friendsgiving. That had more calories than anybody should have dealt with, but it was a really good time, very, very well attended. I had originally said I'd host it, but no more than ten rigs and we ended up having twenty-five or thirty. So typical, we have a new caravan chair in the region. We are organizing caravans to Wyoming. The Oregon clubs' caravans are full, which I think is amazing considering how far out we still have to go. We only do a region rally every other year, but we are working hard on getting some, trying to get contracts. The site that we're looking at right now is in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho for twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-four. And I think that'll be a phenomenal rally. It's a beautiful, beautiful area. Anybody is encouraged to attend that's on here as well. Our region is growing by leaps and bounds. We have an amazing membership chair. That actually got poached by International as well, but I think she's gonna continue to work, work with us and she's great. Buddy, and I think that's about it. It was a really good rally season. I, I don't even know, we probably, I bet we had over fifty rallies in, among the seven clubs this year. So thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. All right, Region Nine? Oh, you're muted, Nancy.
Can you hear?
Yes. Wait a minute, you were there for a second, now you're gone again. Okay, wait, no.
If you're you, Nancy, if you're using your spacebar, you gotta keep it held down. Cause you're, you're turning yourself.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah, talk.
Okay, I have about three questions, but they, they, they take too long. I really would just like to ask Brad if we are going to have a Region Nine's President's discussion. Because I, there's a few things I really need input from others, especially when I, just when I hear about policies. And charters and things like that for the different regions, I would just love a chance to talk with experts. And the other thing I would say quickly, quickly is, do not, do not ever cancel. Your bank account that you may have historically. If we didn't have Lori, we, we would never have been able to get. Our new treasurer on and a new bank account. It was a, it was a lesson learned, a valuable lesson. Never cancel your bank account and try to start anyone. It's not gonna happen. And so that brought up a whole lot of things that I would love to discuss, especially with Region Presidents who've been around a while. So I would appreciate that, Brad. Otherwise, everything has been lovely here in Texas and Oklahoma.
Thanks, Nancy. All right, Region Eight?
Yes, thank you. And Region Eight, we'd like to say Happy Thanksgiving. And that's coming up. I've had several people say Sedalia. What in the world are we gonna do in Sedalia? So our region has created a team, mostly of the local club presidents and officers. And they are collecting all the little oddities and interesting things to do or see within about an hour of Sedalia. So we'll be turning those over to headquarters in the coming months. So we can add things to the list about, hey, you know, did you know there's this little oddity fifteen minutes from Sedalia? It's award-winning, gotta go there. And when you get there, you're gonna say, God, that Region Eight is great. So that's all from Region Eight. Thank you.
Oh, Greg, I'm excited, man. Both need food and head off to Sedalia. All right, sweet. All right, the Region Seven.
Region Seven, being in the northern states, of course, of course, most of our Silver Twinkies are put to bed. Until April or so. And, but a lot of our groups have switched over to personal meetings. Or luncheons coming up in the holidays. And so we have the Region Rally next year in September. In Spring Green, Wisconsin. So I'm excited. It's the first rally I've ever planned, so hopefully it goes off. But yeah, that's about all that's happening here. We're getting lots of snow and that's why we are in the north. I don't like eighty plus.
Sweet, thanks, Tinder. All right, Region Six?
Hey, thank you very much. This is always an exciting time of our IBT minutes because we have a chance to highlight our region. And what they're accomplishing. Region Six is, well, it makes the president look really good because everybody's doing a great job. So I get a lot of credit for things that I'm not really doing, but all the clubs are doing very well. We have a number of fantastic rallies. The old-time fiddler's rally is in Athens, Alabama. And this was Terry's and my second opportunity to visit it. And if you like, you like fiddle music, old-time bluegrass music. It is an amazing place to visit. You really have to put that on your to-do list. After we left there, the whole month of October, we were on the road going to Region rallies as well as Region Six rally. During this Region Six rally, I'm really proud and I've already talked to Karen about it. Were able to raise seven hundred and sixty dollars for the Sense for Youth program in a three-day rally. And I, I think that's pretty impressive. And then after that, we went to the El Dorado Rally, Airstream on the Square Rally. And it's like a premier event in the region, so followed up by some Razorback rallies. So it's, it's a very, very busy rally season for us in October. And coming is December, the Louisiana unit is putting on their Christmas rally. And that's held the eighth of December through the eleventh of December. Another fun thing to do, I'm sure. I haven't experienced it yet, but we will in the future. So Region Six is doing well and I thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Larry. That's really cool. All right, Region Five?
Thank you, Eric. I'd like to invite everybody for twenty twenty-three to come to the Kentucky Horse Park. For the Region Rally in Lexington, Kentucky. Region Five presents Autumn Leaves and Horses, please. And I got lots of sites held. And I'm hoping that I can get some cross attendance. So all guys, all you folks are all welcome to come. Lexington's a beautiful country, horse farms and bourbon. And we look forward to having a very good time. The committee that I put together discussing the change we'll have to do for our twenty twenty-four rally. Which is gonna be in the western part of Region Five Illinois, maybe across the river into Missouri. Due to the proximity of the date that we normally hold our Region Rally. I put together a special committee to try to come up with a date that we will move that, that year. Possibly late May or June. Still needs to be discussed and finalized, whether or not that's a permanent move or not. We don't know yet, but we're. We don't know yet, but we're working on that. But I'd like to invite everybody to the, to the horse park next year and happy Thanksgiving and happy holidays to all of you.
Thanks, Artie. That's really cool. All right, uh, Region Four. And Brad, can you also mention, just I think Nancy asked about the region officers discussion, when you finish the Region Four, please?
Yes, I will. Um, so I want to invite everybody to Kalamazoo, Michigan in May for the Region Four rally. We're going to rendezvous in Kalamazoo. If you uh, look at your calendar, you'll see if you bring your air streams to Jackson Center for the strategy meeting. Um, our rally is the week after, so just head on up a couple hours up the road to Kalamazoo, Michigan and join us. Uh, we can probably handle some early parking if you need to do that. Uh, I want to thank uh, everyone in Region Four, including my officers, uh, Fred Keel and Mike Passva for all their hard work on getting this uh, uh, planned. And I think we'll have a really good time. I, in terms of the uh, region officers meeting, yes, absolutely. Um, Nancy, I appreciate you bringing that up so I could talk about it. Um, I'll be sending out um, an invitation shortly, and I'm going to be working with Karen Fisher on how to do uh, doodle. I don't know if there's a free version or not. We'll get that worked out. Uh, we'll try to get a time that can accommodate as most people we can, okay? And uh, thank you all very much. Oh, one last thing. I don't know what to call this now. We've gone through so many iterations of this group that Nancy's asking for. We've had uh, a forum. Uh, all sorts of things. If nobody objects, I'm going to call it um, Region Officers Forum again. Hopefully not to bring back any bad memories or anything like that. Uh, and we'll see if that goes, and if people object, we'll find a new name, but I'm going to call it Region Officer Forum for now, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. I've taken the leadership to get that going. It's a really important discussion format. I'm really glad that you're going to uh, bring everyone together for that. Thank you. All right, Region Three? Did we lose Christine?
Uh, Christine, you're muted.
Sorry. I'd like to say, late in the evening of November fifteenth, my first VP became a granddad for the first time. Little Finnegan Thomas Ely came into the world and all are doing great. So that was pretty exciting. Um, our region rally is off and running. We have, we put on our Facebook page suggestions for seminars and got some really great suggestions of new seminars that we're going to be trying. And we hope to be seminar-heavy for our region rally, which is scheduled in Ocean Lakes, South Carolina, March twenty-ninth through April second. And all are invited. And I think we're going to have an exciting list of seminars that we're going to be offering to our members. We are having some issues uh, with the pet policy. Um, I will say that our rail, our region is not like Larry's. I wish it was. But we're working through those issues of when pets are welcome and when they are not. Um, we are having some debate about coming up with a pet policy that works for all. And finally, I look forward to the officer forum because it has been a very interesting beginning to um, my presidency in Region Three. I have had some very unique huh, events that I have had to handle, uh, one being a firing of a club president. The other being um, asking a club to revote their slate of officers based on how the election was first presented to all the members. So I would like to give a special thank you to Joanne Miller for her guidance in the policy of voting. And a very, very special thank you to Eric McHenry for all the help and support he gave me in handling the issue at Florida Sun Coast. So thank you to you both.
Thank, thanks, Christine. And one of the things that Christine had mentioned, I know Brad had talked about it too, and Nancy had alluded to, is that there's certain things that the region officers, you guys have to deal with that, you know, international officers don't anymore. And the sharing of best practices is critical. So thank you guys for all bringing these up and sharing them. Right, Region Two?
Uh, RJ left. Eric and Bart had to leave as well. Actually, Bart said that um, his power source is totally depleted. So fine as well.
All right, so we, we are adjourned. Um, in the interest of, hang on a second, Kathy, I see your hand. In the interest of um, time, let's reconvene in uh, and on the top of the hour, at the other uh, Zoom link to, to talk about um, the other thing. Uh, but before we go, Kathy and then Matt, do you have questions or comments?
Uh, just a real quick uh, that I forgot to say, and this is also under Kate Coast's purview, is that we had a beautiful, beautiful article written on the potlatch that's going to be uh, reinstated in Washington State next year, and I really want to encourage everybody to come out for that. It's going to be a heck of an event. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Matt and then Larry?
Yeah, so I just wanted to solicit volunteers since I've been named a special committee chair. Uh, anyone who has knowledge, experience or interest in working with us on the three committees Eric mentioned, or the three standing committees Eric mentioned. I'd love to have volunteers willing to help uh, with a heavy emphasis on action and uh, time commitment. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Larry?
Hey, uh, in all my excitement, I forgot to mention Jan's working real hard on her first region rally. Uh, it's going to be the twenty-seventh through the uh, first of October in Louisiana. And she's working real hard on that and um, just save the dates if you're in that neck of the woods. You'll have a good time. Thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone. Thanks for the long meeting. I apologize, but you know, whatever. Okay, let's take it eight minutes and reconvene on top of the hour on the other Zoom link. All right, thanks. Bye.